Oh, no, no, no. I was just making sure.
Angela's got a lot of thinking going on tonight.
Okay, we're on the air, so I hereby call the 2,250th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
He had a death in his family, and we send out our thoughts to him, and that's why I'm chairing today as the council president. I did want to tell people upfront, I know a lot of you are here for the NMIA thing, that item went four hours with the Planning Commission, and anticipating that it will go long, hopefully not that long, but that it will go long today, we're actually going to switch the order of our agenda, and we're going to do the Keel Gardens item first, because I think it will be relatively short. So if you're here for the NMIA, and you want to go out and grab a cup of coffee or something for half an hour, feel free. We're probably half an hour away from, half an hour, 40 minutes away from getting to it. All right, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the June 13, 2017 study session, and the June 20, 2017 work and regular sessions. A resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for engineering services for the Washington Street storm replacement Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I read so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. None heard? Passes unanimously. All right, audience participation. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a green speaker card available on the table in the hall, and identify agenda item number four, audience participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during public comment may be new to some councilors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up report from the July 5, 2017, audience participation, Ms. Ober?
There is, and I'm actually going to be ceding my time to two different staff people to give you an update on the comments that were made during that meeting. So first, I'd like to invite Chief Bartal to come up for a minute, and it looks like he's also handing me a green sheet, so I'll trade him. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. As Ms. Ober said, I'm going to just address a couple issues from our last meeting. I wanted to take just a few minutes to correct some information that I gave you guys last week in regards to that. As you guys know, the Milwaukee Police Department works very hard to build relationships and establish trust with its community. We take it very seriously. Last week during the public comment portion, when the theme kind of turned to the police department not being transparent in its dealings, I became a little bit frustrated. It took me off guard. And so at one point, I came forward, excuse me, to clarify some of the, or attempt to clarify some of the information that was being talked about and the issues that were raised. And as you guys know me, you've probably noticed a change a little bit in my demeanor and my tone. I was pretty direct. During the conversation, while I was responding to Mr. Rendelman's concerns about the desk log, I indicated that all he need do was to come down to the police department and view the desk log there, that we just weren't printing a special copy for the review any longer. Afterwards, Mr. Rendelman and I had a conversation in the other room, and he kind of indicated to me that that wasn't what was relayed to him by our record supervisor. It was his impression that we were no longer printing the desk log at all, and that that information was only available through public record. So in talking to him and starting to question my recollection of it, I told him I would double-check, and I would get back to him. So in checking with my record supervisor, she reminded me that we did, in fact, discontinue that. We no longer print the desk log. We, in reviewing that, one of the things I asked her to do when we promoted her is to look at all the different business practices that we have within the records department, and ascertain if we have a business need for them anymore. In this particular case, this practice had been carried over since the late 80s. It's what we used to brief our officers on. We don't use that format anymore. And as a result, we were just generating this without a particular business need for the police department. So the decision was, because we were killing a lot of trees and spending time redacting the information, that we would terminate that practice. In a compromise, we started sending the review a list of incidents that include date, time, location, incident type, which is what Mr. Rendelman described to you guys. That being said, if we were to start that practice again of creating that log, it wouldn't be for a business need that we have. That would be something specifically for the review. And because of that, it would take staff time to produce it, it's time to redact it, and printing cost. And because of those facts, the city feels that it would still be appropriate for Mr. Rendelman to pay the $15 public records request. This would be very consistent with what we would do for any other citizen that came to the police department and requested records from us. It would be consistent with what we do for any other media outlet, and it would really be consistent with all business records or all public records that are requested throughout the city and not just the police department. Later in the week, Mr. Rendelman sent me an email, and he expressed his frustrations to me about the way my presentation went. He felt that the way I said what I said construed that he was lazy, and while that was not my intent, I went back and looked at the tape, and I could absolutely see where he would perceive it that way. So I wrote him a letter of apology. I sent it to him, and I immediately pulled that up and sent it back to you guys so that you would know what we were talking about and keeping you on the loop. But I think it was appropriate to come and kind of make that point tonight, because I had said it on the air while we were there. So what are we doing to move forward? I've asked my PIO to reach out on behalf of the city to the review, to set up a meeting between our PIO and the city's PIO and myself to kind of maybe meet with the review and figure out ways that we can maybe mutually help each other and build a better relationship. We've committed to try and push out any press release on any pedestrian auto accident, whether it's a fatal or not, so I think that will help with some of those concerns there. And in addition to our social media that we do on a regular basis, we'll attempt to push more of that information out through press releases as well, so that the review will have access to that as well, rather than just seeing it on our social media. So that's what we've done, and that's kind of where we're going from there. All right?
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, chief.
I also, just because there was a discussion around how we do open records, I wanted to give Scott Stoffer a chance to respond. He actually manages a lot of our records and had a great response, so he's going to talk to you a little bit about that.
So, hello? The city takes very seriously its duty to manage the public's records and to be as transparent as possible, and to make the records available as much as we are able to within state law. And so to that end, we have a couple of practices we've been in operation for years now. We are part of the Organ Record Management Solution, or RMS, which utilizes the HP Records Manager software program, which is administered through the state archives, and that's where we keep our permanent records and our archives and some working documents. But it's a robust Department of Defense certified system, backed up in a data farm in Baker City, and then beyond that, and you know, it's backed up, and we've been using that for quite a few years. We were a pilot agency on that program about a decade ago. There are other agencies in the region that use it. West Lynn, Oregon City, the city of Portland and Metro have their own instances of it. It's a very reliable system, and some of the great features of that system is it's all electric records, electronic records. Is, once a document is in that system, HPRM has the ability to, we can publish documents through a web portal called, we call it our digital archives, and so many records the public is welcome to at any time. Go to our website and search our digital archives and find things.
Milwaukee City Council to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mayor Gamba has been excused from this meeting. He had a death in his family and we sent out our thoughts to him. And that's why I'm chairing today as the council president. I did want to tell people upfront, I know a lot of you are here for the NMIA thing. That item went four hours with the Planning Commission. And anticipating that it will go long to, hopefully not that long, but that it will go long today. We're actually going to switch the order of our agenda and we're going to do the Keel Gardens item first because I think it will be relatively short. So if you're here for the NMIA and you want to go out and grab a cup of coffee or something for half an hour, feel free. We're probably half an hour away from, half an hour, 40 minutes away from getting to it. All right, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the June 13th, 2017 study session and the June 20th, 2017 work and regular sessions. A resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for engineering services for the Washington Street Storm Replacement Project. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would still move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Passes unanimously. All right. Audience participation. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a green speaker card available on the table in the hall and identify Agenda Item Number 4, Audience Participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during public comment may be new to some councilors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up report from the July 5th, 2017 Audience Participation, Ms. Ober?
There is, and I'm actually going to be ceding my time to two different staff people to give you an update on the comments that were made during that meeting. So first I'd like to invite Chief Bartal to come up for a minute. And it looks like he's also handing me a green sheet, so I'll trade him. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. As Ms. Ober said, I'm going to just address a couple of issues from our last meeting. I wanted to take just a few minutes to correct some information that I gave you guys last week in regards to that. As you guys know, the Milwaukee Police Department works very hard to build relationships and establish trust with its community. We take it very seriously. Last week during the public comment portion, when the theme kind of turned to the police department not being transparent in its dealings, I became a little bit frustrated. It took me off guard. And so at one point I came forward, excuse me, to clarify some of the, or attempt to clarify some of the information that was being talked about and the issues that were raised. And as you guys know me, you probably noticed a change a little bit in my demeanor and my tone. I was pretty direct. During the conversation while I was responding to Mr. Rendelman's concerns about the desk log, I indicated that all he need do was to come down to the police department and view the desk log there, that we just weren't printing a special copy for the review any longer. Afterwards, Mr. Rendelman and I had a conversation in the other room and he kind of indicated to me that that wasn't what was relayed to him by our record supervisor. It was his impression that we were no longer printing the desk log at all and that that information was only available through public record. So in talking to him and starting to question my recollection of it, I told him I would double check and I would get back to him. So in checking with my record supervisor, she reminded me that we did in fact discontinue that. We no longer print the desk log. We, in reviewing that, one of the things I asked her to do when we promoted her is to look at all the different business practices that we have within the records department and ascertain if we have a business need for them anymore. In this particular case, this practice had been carried over since the late 80s. It's what we used to brief our officers on. We don't use that format anymore. And as a result, we were just generating this without a particular business need for the police department. So the decision was because we were killing a lot of trees and spending time redacting the information that we would terminate that practice. In a compromise, we started sending the review a list of incidents that include date, time, location, incident type, which is what Mr. Rendelman described to you guys. That being said, if we were to start that practice again of creating that log, it wouldn't be for a business need that we have. That would be something specifically for the review. And because of that, it would take staff time to produce it, it's time to redact it, and printing cost. And because of those facts, the city feels that it would still be appropriate for Mr. Rendelman to pay the $15 public records request. This would be very consistent with what we would do for any other citizen that came to the police department and requested records from us. It would be consistent with what we do for any other media outlet. And it would really be consistent with all business records or all public records that are requested throughout the city and not just the police department. Later in the week, Mr. Rendelman sent me an email and he expressed his frustrations to me about the way my presentation went. He felt that the way I said what I said construed that he was lazy. And while that was not my intent, I went back and looked at the tape and I could absolutely see where he would perceive it that way. So I wrote him a letter of apology. I sent it to him and I immediately pulled that up and sent it back to you guys so that you would know what we were talking about and keeping you on the loop. But I think it was appropriate to come and kind of make that point tonight because I had said it on the air while we were there. So what are we doing to move forward? I've asked my PIO to reach out on behalf of the city to the review to set up a meeting between our PIO and the city's PIO and myself to kind of maybe meet with the review and figure out ways that we can maybe mutually help each other and build a better relationship. We've committed to try and push out any press release on any pedestrian auto accident, whether it's a fatal or not. So I think that will help with some of those concerns there. And in addition to our social media that we do on a regular basis, we'll attempt to push more of that information out through press releases as well so that the review will have access to that as well rather than just seeing it on our social media. So that's what we've done and that's kind of where we're going from there. All right?
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I also, just because there was a discussion around how we do open records, I wanted to give Scott Stoffer a chance to respond. He actually manages a lot of our records and had a great response. So he's going to talk to you a little bit about that.
So. Hello? The city takes very seriously its duty to manage the public's records and to be as transparent as possible and to make the records available as much as we are able to within state law. And so to that end, we have a couple of practices we've been in operation for years now. We are part of the Oregon Record Management Solution, ORMS, which utilizes the HP Records Manager software program, which is administered through the state archives. And that's where we keep our permanent records and our archives and some working documents. But it's a robust Department of Defense certified system backed up in a data farm in Baker City and then beyond that into, you know, it's backed up. And we've been using that for quite a few years. We were a pilot agency on that program about a decade ago. There are other agencies in the region that use it. Westland, Oregon City, the city of Portland and Metro have their own instances of it. It's a very reliable system. And some of the great features of that system is it's all electric records, electronic records. Once a document is in that system, HPRM has the ability to, we can publish documents through a web portal called, we call it our digital archives. And so many records the public is welcome to at any time. Go to our website and search our digital archives and find things. So I was just going to show the public here now real quickly where you can find that. So this is the homepage, City of Milwaukee, milwaukieoregon.gov. And this is bringing it up in what the mobile version looks like. But you go to the hamburger, the little thing in the corner there. But on the regular page, it looks, you know, it's in the right corner. But you go under Useful Links and Digital Archives under Helpful Links. And then this is our digital archives. There's information here about how you can conduct searches on keywords. Below here in the middle, we've kind of set up some, we've set up some pre-made searches for you. So if you want to see what resolutions are, you can click on ordinances. You can run those searches and they'll bring up in chronological order, the newest on top, all the city's ordinances. Same with all board and commission packets, city council packets are all here. Anyway, so we've got some pre-made things based on what we believe and what we've understood the public are most interested in. Or people can go and start searching. The City of Milwaukee, you can search any word in the title of the record and type in and see what comes up. Do a keyword search and then here's all the documents with the word resolution in it. So it's not the perfect system. I don't think there is. It's a very complicated system. But it's, just to let the public know, many records that the city has are available online and there's that form. So if you don't find it there, then in addition to our digital archives, the public is welcome to submit a public records request. As the chief mentioned, we have a citywide process for that. You'd again go to our homepage and then go to Useful Links under Contact the City, Request a Public Record. And there's a pretty simple, straightforward web form here. Name, address, phone number. The red asterisk requires, is a required field. And then you type in this field what you want, what you're looking for from the city. And you put your name in there and there's some notice language and you submit it to us. And the typical process is that generates an email to the city recorder's office and we triage it. And we decide, determine what office is best handled, best able to handle that response. Typically, 90% of our records requests are the police department for police records or the building department for permits for, you know, people buying homes, things like that, selling homes, want to know what's going on with the property they're interested in. We do get one-offs and then we, our office often follows up on special requests or, you know, whatever the appropriate department is. Planning is involved, engineering depending on the request. So that's the typical response. We have long, as long as I've been with the city and my predecessor Pat was very dedicated to being transparent and quick to respond. It's our business practice to respond to all records requests, at least to acknowledge that we receive them, which is not an automated process. Somebody in our office has to send in an acknowledgement within four business hours. And then we work with the departments to follow up as quickly as practical. Sometimes some departments take longer than others and there's just, you know, they've got other stuff on their plates and going on like that. So, and we follow up with them and we answer questions from the public and we try to be as helpful as possible in that process. And I'd say 96 to 97% of our requests are completed within three business days, maybe five business days. So that's the records request process. If you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. Kind of tied to that, and as this council is very aware, the state legislature has just wrapped up and there were quite a few records requests, records management items that they dealt with this year. And then some reports I saw from the Oregonian that suggested the most activity for records management in the state of Oregon in 40 years since our records laws and public meetings laws were enacted in the 70s. So it was a very active session. Through my, through the Oregon Association of Municipal Recorders, City Recorders Clerks Group, I was tracking quite a few of these. I'm not concerned generally with most of the legislation that was passed. A lot of it was in the result of email situations in Salem a couple of years ago. And so a lot of it had to do with state level stuff and exemptions of the over 400, you know, exemptions for why you can't, you shouldn't disclose public records, dealing with some of that stuff. There was one Senate bill that passed, Senate Bill 41, which dealt directly with public records requests and it kind of set timelines as to how agencies, when agencies should respond. And I am completely confident, and based on the timelines I just told you, we already exceed those minimum timelines, I think. And they were with great input from cities, which I was very happy to see in their process. They appreciated that not all cities are the same size and not all cities have the same staff that can respond as quickly. So they built into that bill plenty of allowance for agencies that have one person handling their records requests. Certainly that's where we're lucky in our office. We have healthy staff that we can respond to these requests pretty promptly. But I think there was a minimum of, at least acknowledge it within three days and then get a follow-up within five days maybe or something like that. But we exceed that because we're usually responding within hours, business hours of receiving the email. So there were some other legislation that has various parts, but really that SB 41 was the one that I was most watching. The other, there's ongoing, there's Attorney General's Task Force on Public Records Reform, which generated changes to the number of exemptions in state law. And there's going to be a new council on Public Records Advocate. And there's some new functions at the state level, which will certainly be helpful statewide. But again, I'm pretty confident in our system and our ability to respond and our uniformity about that. And, but then again, you know, no system is ever perfect. So always welcome to improve what we do. But if you have any questions on our public records or our digital archives, we're happy to answer.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Scott? I've submitted a request before, so I'm familiar with that form. But it's nice that you did the, I like that you did the demo online. So that makes it easy for people to actually see.
Sure.
How easy it is to do.
And being where we are in 2017 with technology, 99% of our requests, we do receive through this form through email. But I do want to point out that we do receive paper. We do see paper requests. If people need help accessing this on the internet, the staff at the front desk here at City Hall or my staff or myself can provide paper copies and they can send them that way as well. So. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ober. So most everyone who's done green cards are for the NMIA matter. But I have one that's for audience participation. And again, three, we'll limit you to three minutes and Councilor Parks is our timekeeper. So, Noreen Tellisman? So please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Noreen Tellisman, 3703 Southeast Pinehurst Avenue, 97267. And I'm here-
Can you pull that mic down a little bit closer so that it picks you up better? Yeah, I think so.
Do you need me to repeat any?
No, 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 you're fine.
I am the Sight and Hearing Chairman of the Milwaukee Lions and I'm here at the request and hope for our club and board to get an informational sign put on the street such as is all across the country for VFW Rotary Club, that kind of thing, people coming into or going out of Milwaukee. There was not a good picture, but this is the color the logo would be. And this sheet gives you the signs. We can do a bigger one. We can do two-sided. And we might do a panel of extra information. I first contacted Dave Levitan in April and he was very helpful and worked to steer me to the right direction and place. And I then got in touch with a gentleman named Mitch, I don't know his last name, who suggested that I just come and present this to city council. And so that's what I'm doing and we certainly will pay for the sign. But we don't know really how to go about getting this done and if it's a possibility, we hope so.
And the sign would just be Lions Club and have your meeting info or what?
Well, it can have the meeting info. But as this says, Lions International, which is what most of the big signs have that we could buy. And then you can get a side panel with your specific information of like your meeting days and place. And usually they're wood and, you know. That's about all I can tell you because this is new for us and we just, we would like more members. We want people to be more aware of our club.
Okay. I think it's kind of new for us too. I don't know that we have any signs like that, but I will ask the city manager to put that-
And I can leave these with you?
If you'd leave it with her, that would be great. And we thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for general audience participation who's not here for the NMIA or the Keel Gardens? All right. All right, then we will move on to Keel Gardens. Like I said, we're going to switch the order because I think this one will hopefully be the shorter of the two. So, Keel Gardens Zoning and Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The public hearing on the zoning map and comprehensive plan amendments, file numbers ZA-2017-002 and CPA 2017-001 is called to order. This request was considered by the Planning Commission at their May 9th, 2017 and June 13th, 2017 public hearings. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning map and comprehensive plan amendments on June 13th, 2017. All persons wishing to speak on this proposal will be recognized by council. The testimony we receive will be used by council in coming to a decision on the proposal. Audience demonstrations, personal attacks or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We, the council, are here to listen to testimony and come to the best possible decision. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the Milwaukee Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the request for zoning map and comprehensive plan amendments to lots located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue. The applicable standards to be considered are found in the Milwaukee Municipal Code, Chapter 19, Sections 902.3, 902.4, and 902.6. This will be a legislative decision by the council and will be based on the following standards. The statewide planning goals, applicable federal or state laws or rules, any applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro, applicable comprehensive plan policies and applicable provisions of implementing ordinances, consistency and compatibility with surrounding land uses and availability of adequate infrastructure. The order of business we will follow in conducting this hearing will be first a staff report, then any correspondence, then testimony in support, neutral, and in opposition, a staff response if needed, questions from council to staff, close of public hearing, and deliberation. The city council will be the final decision of the city. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria. Failure to address a criterion or raise any issue with sufficient detail precludes an appeal based on that criterion or issue. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the city council to the State Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding are those who submit written comments or testify and sign the city council attendance signup sheet found on the information table in the hallway. Does any member of the city council wish to announce any actual or potential conflicts of interest as defined in Oregon Revised Statute, Section 244?
No.
No.
No. None? Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to make any challenge to any council members' impartiality or ability to participate in this decision? Seeing none, I'll ask Associate Planner Vera Colias to, oh, I'm asking her, oh, sorry. Wait, no, no. I am asking you to come forward, sorry. I'm having trouble with my script. Yes, please. Good evening. Yeah, that's later, yeah. That's the second.
Good evening, members of council. Vera Colias with the Planning Department here to present the Zone and Comprehensive Plan Amendment presentation. The subject property contains four residential parcels, zoned residential R7 in the Hector Campbell neighborhood. They're outlined here in the teal color. Two existing single-family dwellings occupy two of the properties, 4217 and 4219 Southeast Railroad Avenue, in addition to two undeveloped or vacant parcels. The property is generally an open grass area with a collection of some trees scattered throughout. It's approximately 3.25 acres in size. Surrounding area consists of residential uses on three sides. To the south is Railroad Avenue, also an active rail line, and the Business Industrial Zone. The structure located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Ave was identified as a significant historic resource in the 1988 Cultural Resources Inventory. On May 9th, 2017, the Planning Commission approved a demolition permit for the structure. And that was a land use review, HR 2017-001.
And there was no appeal of that?
There was not, no. What year was it?
Oh, that was May of this year.
Of this year.
The demolition permit that was submitted to the building official kind of started that whole process and it also went to the Design and Landmarks Committee as well. Residential, again, the property is zoned residential R7. There's residential R5 directly across 42nd Avenue from the property. And again, the BI zone of the Business Industrial Zone is south of the property. The proposal for this project is to rezone the property from R7 to R5 in order to subdivide the property to create a 19-lot subdivision that would be accessed by two new public streets, Southeast 43rd and Southeast 44th Avenue in a loop road off of Southeast Railroad Avenue. The two existing single-family homes will be removed as part of the project. City utility services will be provided via an extension of public sanitary sewer and water lines from Railroad Ave and Southeast 42nd Ave to serve all of the proposed new lots. The subdivision design that you see is based on R5 zoning that's been requested rather than the R7 zoning on the site. So a zone change, of course, is required as part of this project.
So this is not really that pertinent, but just to make sure I understand it, they're both going to be numbered streets even though they go different directions?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah. The application package for this project includes the 19-lot subdivision, two variance applications, zoning map amendment, that's to rezone the property from R7 to R5 and to remove the property at 4217 Southeast Railroad from the Historic Resources overlay. And a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation of the property to coincide with the zone change. So it will be going from low density to moderate density and that is consistent with the zone change itself. And then there's also the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment and that is to remove the historic property, 4217 Railroad Ave, from Appendix 1 of the comprehensive plan, which is the list of the historic resources. So it all kind of hinges on the zone change piece and then the historic resources and then kind of what falls from that to make sure everything is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And so it's only those last three bullets that are before us tonight?
It's actually the last two, the zoning map amendments and the comprehensive plan map and text. I just kind of wanted to have everyone understand kind of what this whole process has required. So for this project, again, we had the historic demolition review. That was the first part of this project. Then we had a Type 3 subdivision and variance review with the Planning Commission. And then finally, there's the Type 4 zoning and comprehensive plan map amendment, plan amendments, both text and map amendments. And that's where we are here before the commission tonight. The Planning Commission approved the Type 3 applications and made a recommendation to city council to approve the Type 4 applications. The applicant opted to have the Type 3 and 4 review processes run concurrently rather than kind of get the three, Type 3s done and then start the Type 4. Certainly there was some risk, you know, in the Planning Commission or the city council in not approving the Type 4 because the subdivision, the variances, of course, hinge on the Type 4 applications being approved. But the applicant chose to sort of run them all at the same time, all at the same time, which is why we are here tonight. So, the approval criteria for the zoning map amendments have to do with compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, predominant land use pattern in the neighborhood, demonstrated need for the zone change itself, are there adequate facilities to service the development that would be as a result of the zone change, and inconsistency with comp plan, Metro, and any state planning goals and policies. Similarly, the comprehensive plan amendments, again, talk about, the approval criteria talk about consistency with city goals and policies. Is it in the public interest, and does it serve a public need? And again, consistency with Metro, state goals, and policies as well. And as I said, the comprehensive plan amendments are necessary as the zone change is asking for R7 to R5. We're going from low density to moderate density in the comprehensive plan land use map, and then dealing with the historic resources itself, the item coming out of the appendix in the comprehensive plan. Staff identified a key issue for your discussion tonight, and again, it does kind of center on the zone change itself. Is it appropriate to rezone the site from R7 to R5? And so, we have submitted some comments in the staff report related to this, very similar to what we submitted to the Planning Commission as well. We believe, or staff believes, that the zone change proposal is appropriate, given the characteristics of the surrounding area. To the west, across Southeast 42nd Avenue, is an area zoned R5 with the moderate density designation in the comprehensive plan. To the south is Railroad Avenue, which is a busy or heavily traveled road. And then, of course, there's the Business Industrial Zone directly across the street from that. In the R7 zoned areas directly north and east of the site, many of the lots, in fact, are kind of what we might call an R6 zone. They're actually in the 6,000 square foot range. They're actually, they don't meet the minimum lot size for the R7. So, they kind of are sort of a quasi-R6 zone to that extent from the size and density of the surrounding neighborhood, of the surrounding development. So, the R5 zone here would not be inconsistent or incompatible with the surrounding land uses around the area. Although the R5 and the moderate density land use designation does reflect the higher density, again, it's not inconsistent or certainly not incompatible with what's happening around it. Smaller minimum lot sizes would provide more opportunity for the development of additional housing, which is a need that has been identified, of course, in the housing needs assessment that the council is aware of. The R7 zone is also the largest zone in the city. It comprises over 40% of the total land area in the city, and that's across all zones, not just the residential zones. By comparison, the R5 is just over 10% of the total land area. So, by, I guess, quote-unquote, "losing" some R7 zoned areas, we're not in a deficit of R7 zoned lots. The staff recommendation is to approve the land use applications, consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendations as well, and this would rezone the property to R5, and it would permit the construction of the 19-lot subdivision, which was, again, approved by the Planning Commission on June 13. We, staff received no comments from the public notification for this hearing, and that went out to a 400-foot buffer because it's an R4, or it's a Type IV application, so it went larger than the typical 300-foot buffer. Council has some options in making your decision this evening. You could approve the applications based on the findings that staff recommended. You could modify those findings and still approve the applications. You could deny the applications upon finding that they do not meet the criteria, and certainly continue the hearing to August 1 if you needed more time to discuss. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, my only question is, I noticed the script doesn't have the, have an applicant, so there's not an applicant. The city is the applicant? It doesn't have someone coming up to talk as an applicant? He's back there waving his hand, so I guess he does...
There is in fact an applicant. I'm not presenting this on behalf of the applicant, I'm presenting this on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Okay, okay.
So, yes.
Okay. And you already answered the question of, we have not received any correspondence on this matter. Any other questions for Vera?
I have no questions.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right. It's not in my script, but if the applicant wishes to speak, he is welcome to come speak.
Council President Beatty, there is some conduct of hearing discussion.
Oh, sorry. Have I skipped?
At the bottom of page eight. And then the next page is the proposed in support...
Testimony, support, neutral, right. But usually, the applicant comes before you do the conduct of hearing?
Okay.
And then you do that, and you do the...
In this time, we didn't include the, this as we have before, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure you saw that.
Yeah, I know, I saw that, okay. And we typically do not limit applicants to the three minutes. We limit the public comment, but not the applicant himself. So, we would love it if you would stick to three minutes, but we will not require that. So, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Mark Dane, 12375 Southwest Glen Haven Street, Portland, Oregon, 97225. I'm simply coming up here to make sure that I'm on the record should this be taken further. We don't believe so. I have here the staff report. I can refer to any specific questions that you have. Seeing how many people are here for the next hearing, I don't want to use up any unnecessary time. We can get into the weeds of this if you like. We have tried to follow the path, and we have tried to provide the city with what we believe will be a very good addition, and we've had a lot of support from a number of the neighbors, and we believe we've satisfied all the criteria, and we would like to proceed with the middle of the construction documents. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Councilor Parks has a question?
I believe I read in the staff report or in your documents, I think maybe it was, that the size of the homes would be probably between 1,800 square feet and 2,400 square feet. Is that right? Or bigger?
That was a probable guess. That was prior to us. We have a building partner now. We're still working on that. Obviously, it's gonna depend upon what the market assessment, but most houses are gonna be three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage, something fairly standard. We don't want to overbuild. We want to make sure we meet the market here.
Yeah.
But that would not be untrue, no.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I noticed in your application materials, some places it refers to Keel Gardens, and some places it refers to Railroad Gardens, and I wondered, who is Keel?
Actually, it's not Keel, it's Kyle.
Kyle, okay.
And that is the hereditary name. It's the family name that tied to the historic...
The home?
Designation, which actually was, Kyle was the family member that built the addition onto the house, and it was put on the registry back in the 80s. At that time, it had been anticipated by some members of the family who were living on the property, they would be able to maintain the property and find a way to purchase it and bring it back to life. The building's been vacant for three decades now.
Wow.
Been used for storage, and it's in bad repair. We are, however, salvaging a lot of the wood there, and some of the record states in terms of what we're gonna be doing, we're starting to do some deconstruction. The name of the company, the development company, is Sustainable Landfill Development, and we're working with a builder partner, but we've got the demo permit, but we'll be deconstructing that one home, demolishing the other home. But our intent is to start next month if possible.
Other questions from anyone?
I don't have any more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, now I'll read the script about, the script about conduct of hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this matter? I do have one person who wished to comment. I will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and when you come to the table, please state your name and city of residence for the record, because this hearing will be recorded. I won't read the whole script about three minutes. I trust that Mr. Ashenbrenner will keep himself to three minutes.
He's not, he's not...
Okay. Any testimony in support of the proposal? And that would be Mr. Ashenbrenner.
Dave Ashenbrenner, 11505 Southeast Home Avenue, President of the Chair, President of Historic, Hector Campbell Neighborhood Association. I'm just here in case you had any comments from the neighborhood. We fully support this project. We've had a good working relationship with Mr. Dane and his people, and we just want to see this go forward.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ashenbrenner?
No.
No? Thank you. I've never known him to be that brief. All right. I don't have any other cards, so I won't go through the litany of neutral and opposition since no one else, no one's raising any hands, all right? Does the staff have anything to add which specifically addresses a question raised during the testimony? Nothing much was raised during the testimony, okay? Does any member of the council have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point?
I do have one question on the street naming. Is that, who gets to do the street naming?
Vera, come forward, please.
The city through the, with the engineering department would name the streets.
And they determine that...
Not unusual to council president's remark?
I can't speak to the unusualness of that, but it, we can, and we can certainly reconcile that through the final plat process if necessary. But as submitted with the preliminary plat with comment from the engineering department, that's how the streets naming came in place. If it needs to be revised in any way, we can do that through the final plat.
Just curious, thanks.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing.
I move to close the public testimony portion of the hearing.
A second.
Moved and seconded to close the public testimony. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The public testimony portion of the public hearing on the ordinance amending the zoning map and comprehensive plan land use map, file number ZA-2017-002 and CPA 2017-001 is hereby closed. Oh, that's what I was supposed to say. Is there any council discussion?
No, I have none.
I would say that normally, when something like this comes to council, you think that changing zoning and comp plan is a big deal, but this applicant's done, done the homework, worked very well with the city. I'd note that the Planning Commission was unanimous vote on every time that it came before them. We saw that there were no correspondence. We just heard from the Chair of the Neighborhood Association wanting to move forward. So, I have, I don't think this is controversial at all, and I support it.
Yeah, it seems a good model for developers to follow.
Agree 100%, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
And not just the neighborhood, the historical, the society, in terms of the deconstruction and working with them to try to salvage as much as possible, not just in terms of building materials, but artifacts that might exist. So, thank you very much for that outreach.
So, with that, if I may, I'd move for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 from residential R7 to residential R5. Remove the historic resource overlay from the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue to amend the Milwaukee Comprehensive Plan land use map to designate lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 as moderate density rather than low density, and to remove the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue from comprehensive plan amended Appendix 1 Historic Resource Property List, file ZA-2017-002 and CPA-2017-001.
I second.
I wanted you to repeat on that.
Unfortunately, that falls to me.
It was for me.
So, it has been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 from residential R7 to residential R5. Remove the historic resource overlay from the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue to amend the Milwaukee Comprehensive Plan land use map to designate tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 as moderate density rather than low density, and to remove the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue from comprehensive plan Appendix 1 Historic Resources Property List. And all of that together is file number ZA-2017-002 and CPA 2017-001. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None heard? Passes unanimously. Ms. Ober, please read that yet again, twice.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, to amend the zoning map to rezone tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 from residential R7 to residential R5. Remove the historic resource overlay from the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue to amend the Milwaukee Comprehensive Plan land use map to designate tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 as moderate density rather than low density, and to remove the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue from comprehensive plan Appendix 1 Historic Resources Property List, file number ZA-2017-002 and CPA-2017-001. And again. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, to amend the zoning map to rezone tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 from residential R7 to residential R5. Remove the historic resource overlay from the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue to amend the Milwaukee Comprehensive Plan land use map to designate tax lots 12E31BC lots 8,800, 8,200, and 8,300 as moderate density rather than low density, and to remove the property located at 4217 Southeast Railroad Avenue from comprehensive plan Appendix 1 Historic Resources Property List, file number ZA-2017-002 and CPA-2017-001.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, would you please poll the council?
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Abma?
Yes.
Councilor Faulkner?
Yes.
Council President Beatty?
Yes.
Motion is adopted for zero, ordinance number 2151.
All right. I think it took longer to read the motion than the whole hearing took, but I have to read a little appeal information. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the City Council to the State Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. The written decision will contain an explanation of the appeal rights. If you have questions, please call the Planning Department staff. All right, well, with that, we will go back to the item we skipped over, which...
You can take that.
Oh, yeah. All right. So, now, this is public hearing item 5A, adoption of the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Framework Plan and Implementation Strategy. The public hearing on the resolution directing staff to prepare plan and code amendments to implement the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Framework Plan and Implementation Strategy is hereby called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a resolution directing staff to prepare plan and code amendments to implement the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan. Does any member of the City Council wish to announce any actual or potential conflicts of interest?
No.
No? Does any member of the audience wish to make any challenge to any council members' impartiality or ability to participate in this decision? Seeing none, we'll turn to Economic Development and Resource Coordinator, Amy Kosky, to give the staff report.
Good evening, Councilor Beatty, members of the City Council. We're happy to be here tonight for our public hearing on the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan. I have with me here today Alex Doopy. He's from MIG, our consultant on this project, and I am Amy Kosky, Economic Development Project Coordinator at the city. So, we have a presentation that we'd like to run through, and I'm gonna let Alex start us off with that.
Great. Thank you for having us in tonight. Once again, I'm Alex Doopy with MIG, and Amy and I are gonna tag-team this presentation a bit, so I'll start it off and then turn it over to her to talk about some of the land use pieces that we've been developing as a part of this process. Just to remind people where this project is, this is along McLaughlin Boulevard, essentially from the Tacoma Station, White Rail Station, down to Highway 224 to the south, the railroad tracks on the east side over to 17th Avenue on the west. Part of this area was covered through the Tacoma Station area planning process. We've incorporated that, that plan, and also made some modifications, or recommended modifications to that. The key piece of this, though, is that area east of McLaughlin Boulevard, which is the new planning area incorporated into this that was not included in the Tacoma Station area plan. So, it's a more comprehensive area, but also a very dynamic area as well. For requested actions, we are looking at requesting the adoption of a resolution to proceed with preparation of comprehensive plan and zoning code amendments. As a part of this project, this is a framework plan, so we've made land use recommendations as a part of this plan. The zoning code is to follow in the fall of 2017, and that's what we've been spending a lot of time with, with the Advisory Committee as well as Planning Commission to help define, you know, what those, those broad brushstrokes are of the land use zoning. to help define, you know, what those broad brushstrokes are of the land use zoning pieces. So, we'll be talking a bit about that, but what you'll not see in this document is specific planning and zoning code. That's to come in upcoming months. So, this does set policy, direction, and implementation. We have an extensive implementation strategy at the back of the document that looks at specific projects, but also looks at funding opportunities. So, we know that these things are not city-led, they're also not purely private-led. It is a combination and a partnership between the two agencies and parties as a part of this process. All right, so let's talk briefly about the framework plan and its origin. One of the first pieces that we developed, or, you know, task of this project, was to develop a vision for the area. We've had a lot of discussion about, you know, what this area is. You know, it's, there's a lot of employment there. What's it going to be in the next 20 years? You know, should we look at residential as a part of this, or mixed use, or other types of land uses that, you know, kind of create potentially a different district than what is out there today? And the overarching, I think, not, I wouldn't say consensus, but majority of opinion is that this is an employment area, both through the Advisory Committee input as well as a public survey that we completed citywide about, you know, what should go in this area? You know, how does this area relate to other parts of the city? You know, should residential be involved? And again, what came out of it is that this should be employment. It should provide a variety of types of employment, maybe not strictly warehouse or transportation-related employment now, but, you know, thinking in the future of what the next 20 years of what an innovative district might look like. What types of businesses would come in here? What scale of buildings and size and services are they looking for? And that's really where this vision came to be, is that it is an innovation district. It is a place where people can come to work, and that it's family wage jobs. So, it supports both what's existing there now, which is a high level of employment. The area is almost completely utilized, so taking advantage of that, but really setting the stage for moving forward, because employers are looking for different types of places to be. As a part of the vision, we set goals, and we have five goals that focuses on economic development and employment, infrastructure, land use and urban design, transportation and mobility, and then a community-supported vision. And for each of these goals, we have multiple objectives and action items underneath each of those to implement those goals. So, if you look at the vision at, you know, the umbrella statement, these are the things that start to implement that plan, and that's really where the implementation comes into the plan and through the next steps. I think it's very important to mention that there is, we had multiple public meetings. We had three open houses, a modified workshop. We had an online survey. We also had two advisory groups working through this process. So, there was a lot of opportunity for people to provide input for what the plan is in front of you today. And it's a diverse area. You know, the North Milwaukee Industrial Area, it's a mouthful to say. It's diverse. It has a lot of different jobs, a lot of different types of employees, employers, but it's also challenged. When we look at how, what future employers are looking for, they're looking at the ability to walk to services. Even if they are large manufacturers, people want services. They want places to go and eat, and so establishing a solid pedestrian system, a network that still supports those big trucks, but also makes it safe when you're mixing that with pedestrians and cyclists and, you know, where you park your cars. And there's great new businesses. Saco Tumi is one of the newer businesses in here, and this is an interesting business in that they were located in Portland, they were growing, and they couldn't afford to stay where they were. And so, they looked to Milwaukee because it's very close to, you know, other business centers in the area where Saco Tumi does business, but it's affordable. The City of Milwaukee is an easy place to do business. That's one reason why they came out here. But there's also some opportunity to do what they want, which is really the next wave, warehousing and manufacturing, having their corporate office here. So, they do design, as, you know, so they have the office work, but then they also have those other pieces that make their business whole. So, this is, you know, some of the next types of things we're seeing.
Did they buy their building, or do they lease? Do you know?
They lease.
They did lease. It required extensive improvements. Primarily, they do a lot of work. They design here and then ship their designs to South Korea to be manufactured, and then it comes back. So, they needed a significant upgrade to their Wi-Fi and/or, you know, their internet. So, that's a big issue, and that's one of the more limiting factors for an older district. It's not sewer and water here, it's really telecommunications. The other piece, what we're seeing, what we saw through the market analysis and from talking to folks, is that this area is essentially fully utilized. It's about a 3% to 4% vacancy rate, so there is not a lot of space in there right now. So, it's not, you know, thinking about ways to replace those businesses, but it's trying to identify which ways, you know, you could start to support some of that streetscape, or you could start to support some of that service orientation. And what we found is that transition for some buildings, you know, it's generally low cost. You can start to provide, you know, extra services with the existing businesses without actually, you know, rebuilding or reconstructing. And so, we looked a lot at feasibility for what you could do now versus what you'd have to do later on. And so, this is an example. We drew up a few of these of ways that you could change or convert warehouse space, so that you still have that manufacturing space, but then you do have maybe a small retail component to it that supports the neighborhood, it supports other employees, but it also starts to bring in a new look for businesses. And we heard through stakeholders and interviews that this is something that people are looking But then there's the other end of the spectrum. So, there's the what is, what's the next 20 years? And what we heard through advisory committees, let's push a bit. Let's think about, you know, not what could happen now, which is the kind of rehab or, you know, fix up the warehouses. It's, you know, when land values increase or building values increase or, you know, different types of uses come online, what are the types of buildings that they're going to need? And this is a building actually in northwest Portland that was built on spec, so they didn't have tenants when they built the building, but it's a multi-story industrial space. And this is a space that, you know, to be honest, is probably one of the first buildings in decades that's been built as multi-story industrial. But it's been very interesting when we toured the building, the types of businesses that they have in there. So, there are makers, you know, there are people that actually do and produce things, but then there's also Amazon Prime owns the first two, or leases the first two floors, and they use that as a drop-off spot for local neighborhoods with their one-to-two-hour services. So, there is a push, and there is a change for the types of uses and different uses. I'd say this is a unique example, but one that we may start seeing over time, you know, throughout the region for how industrial is.
And is it fully occupied now?
Pretty close. Pretty close. And they're actually looking at building another building right at that for lease sign across there. The challenge with this building has been, how do you keep that maker quality and not just have it office? You know, how do you balance those?
Do they allow office?
Well, this is an industrial-zoned area, so part of the challenge for them is to make sure that their tenants are, you know, essentially, you know, abiding by what that industrial zoning says, which is production of some sort. But what is production? Is it a camera studio that takes pictures and then make, you know, creates the pictures there or prints things? I mean, that's where the gray area has come. But that's really where maker space is going, 3D printers. You know, you can do that in a very small space compared to some of the larger manufacturers we've seen. But yeah, it's an interesting, I'll say prototype, but it's been successful for what they've been doing. The other piece of this plan, and we looked at this plan, I guess, in two different lenses. One is more the traditional approach. What's the economic development strategy? What are the specific infrastructure measures that you need to make it successful? What land use do you need to open it up to different types of businesses? We also took another approach, which is looking at it as an eco-district. And an eco-district is essentially a different way to think about systems, but also how you brand a site, types of businesses that you want to attract. It kind of creates a there-there, if you will, for what this area could be. And we're seeing this in other areas in Gresham. Other, Port of Portland is looking at some spaces as well as, you know, kind of redefining what industrial space is. And when we think about this, it's partly implementation, but it is also branding. And so, that is part of the eco-district mentality. And we go on pretty extensively in how we address that. For the eco-district, we've tied each of the policies and actions to an eco-district action item. So, in the implementation plan, you'll see a little green dot for those specific actions that relate directly to the eco-district. So, not all of them do, but, you know, a majority of them are in that realm, because it is important. And specifically, when you look at Johnson Creek, you know, Johnson Creek is a defining feature that nobody knows about when you're back there. And we've heard over and over that that would be a great recreation option, but it's also a great attractor for businesses. If you're looking at changing some of those warehouse space to more flex space, or opening it up, dealing with recreation, which people desire, but still focusing on that recreation, or excuse me, that employment and eco-district component. It's also a great way to think about stormwater, which is probably the biggest issue for development in the area right now. And to do that, you know, there are specific systems, whether it's eco roofs. We do recommend that as part of your building code for some of these areas. Green streets, which are kind of more normal streets now. Most people are doing green streets as a part of their systems. How extensive that is is really up to you, but that is a key way to deal with some of your stormwater in the right-of-way. Solar is a big deal. We have, you know, potentially, well, we do have a lot of flat roofs in the area. Those spaces can be heavy, and a member of the advisory group said we should look for shading, potentially, if we're looking at taller buildings, to make sure if there's solar that other buildings don't shade it. But potentially a great way to, you know, to remove some of the energy need for the area. That could be done with existing buildings. And then finally, and I think probably the biggest piece, is looking at how we deal with wastewater. We've proposed a sewer mine, if you will, which is essentially an interim system that connects directly to the sewer main, and we're proposing one just south of McBride, that actually collects that, treats it, and then can be pumped back as gray water back into buildings if they're double-plumbed. So, you can start to use that for toilets and irrigation and other pieces. And that's been a big move, particularly if you're looking to rehab some of the warehouses. The great thing about warehouses, they don't have walls, and that you can do many of these systems pretty reasonably compared to if you had a house or something like that where you have to tear things open. And then finally, branding. There's great history in this area, whether it's the old ODOT site, or some of the old machinery. Having Tacoma Station area, the location there is amazing for the area. So, actually creating a brand around that. So, looking at what those key pieces of the eco-district is and developing some materials to start attracting businesses for it. And that's a big piece of the implementation measure is, to make this successful, you need to be active. You need to have somebody doing the work, knowing the businesses, and then going out and, you know, trying to attract other businesses to come in. But this is a piece to help do that. I want to touch just briefly on transportation. We looked a lot at transportation. McLaughlin Boulevard is the defining feature, but I would also say that Spring Water Corridor, Tacoma Station area, all of those pieces provide a system within which this area functions, or doesn't function. We've also heard a lot about that. So, Tacoma Station, being able to connect that, it's great to have that facility, but how do you get people safely between the station and across Spring Water Corridor and into the employment areas? We heard a mix of businesses that some use transit, some use bikes, others don't, but newer businesses are searching for these options, particularly as congestion increases. And so, we've developed plans both from a bicycle and pedestrian standpoint, but also as a transportation, more formal like auto transportation, and make sure that we can get people through into the area. This is not a typical grid system. We know this is, you know, bigger parcels. There are large buildings already there. So, you don't see a grid in there, but you do see key connections to make those things happen. And that's really, you know, if you look at employment and what you want to do, it's, you don't want to break it up into a, you know, a 300-foot block like you would have a downtown. This is a different environment than that.
So, can you, can you talk a little bit about what specifically, I mean, I remember in previous meetings and in the open houses, talking about connectivity issues, but the issue of the McLaughlin intersections has been a thorny one that I've heard talked about for a decade or more. So, are there specific things being proposed for the McLaughlin intersections? Other than, I saw there was improved signage, which actually could definitely use that, but...
That's the first piece, is, and I think I've had to come out here half a dozen times at least to not get lost at the Ochico and Tacoma Station area. I mean, it's like, am I turning right here, or am I turning right at the next one? So, signage is kind of your first piece. From a transportation standpoint, those two intersections already fail in 2035 or 2040, according to your transportation system plan. So, something will need to be done to those intersections, and that'll be a key piece of the zoning discussion. Right now, we're working on a scenario to see what the current zoning might do in terms of traffic. You know, will it make it worse? Will it not have a large effect? When you get into zoning, you have to do a formal analysis, which includes the Oregon Department of Transportation, and that's called the Transportation Planning Rule Analysis. And if the zoning does require additional capacity, that'll be part of that plan. So, I would expect that there would be some type of mitigation, if you will, at those intersections, but at this point, we're not sure what degree that is. And we probably won't know, you know, until the fall at a very specific level. Right now, we're trying to get it to, is it going to make it really bad, or is it not going to make it that bad? That's the level of detail that we'll have in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
But yeah, they're challenging intersections, and it's not just about cars. If you're a bicycle or pedestrian, it's dangerous. And if you're really looking at a single district, you know, improving those connections is critical, because people are walking across Ochico, you know.
People are walking across McLaughlin, getting off a bus and walking across McLaughlin, yeah, with strollers. I mean, it's not a safe situation.
Well, and if you want to encourage, you know, non-auto uses, and it's not just about trucks, it needs to be safe. And that's one of the first choices people will make, is if they don't feel safe getting off the bus or riding their bike, they won't do it, no matter how skilled or, you know, risky you are. All right, so with this, I'm going to turn it over to Amy. We're going to talk through land use.
So, with land use, Alex already mentioned that we're not specifically defining all of the zoning at this point, but we're trying to give you a framework and start to think about what we need as far as uses and zoning. So, I'll walk through that. And here we have the current and the proposed zoning up in front of you. Just to refresh your memory, the current zoning is based on the Tacoma Station area plan that was back in 2013, and it rezoned those highlighted areas, the MTSA zones 1, 2, 3, and then 4. And it didn't take a look at those outer edges of the M-zone, the lighter, or I guess the, yeah, the darker blue. So, this plan incorporates all of that area, trying to think a little bit more holistically about this district as a whole. And so, what we're proposing is kind of consolidating some of the zoning into two new zones. In the north, it would just be the MTSA, the Tacoma Station area manufacturing zone, and then consolidating subareas 1, 2, and 3. And then the southern portion in the black would be what we're calling the new NMIA zone. And we would be kind of combining the MTSA 4 and the M-zones into one with some nuances, so I'll walk through that. So, that MTSA new proposed zone consolidating MTSA subareas 1, 2, and 3 into one, the purpose of this is to really take advantage, continue to take advantage of the strategic location to the Tacoma Station area and the MAX line and that connection. When the Tacoma Station area plan was done, it was all with that in mind. The orange line was just going to be coming in, and so, that area has already been zoned for residential, mixed-use, commercial, mixed-use commercial above, or residential above. And so, we're continuing to suggest that we keep that, and then allowing some additional improvements, maybe, so to speak. One is increasing the building height. It's currently been 65 or 45 feet in zones 2 and 3, and 65 in zone 1. We want to just make that across the board 65 feet, and that's up for some discussion when we get into the planning recommendations, that maybe that should go a little bit higher. But for now, we've said, at least let's be consistent across all three of those zones in MTSA. And then, limiting commercial uses would still be, we would allow 20,000 square feet of commercial, and what we had proposed is doing away with the conditional use for 30,000 square feet of commercial in these areas, but that is also part of Planning Commission's recommendation that we'll touch on too, to keep that. So, in general, this area is supposed to be a mixed employment, retail, residential area, and a mixed-use area.
Can I ask, so we're four years, not quite... Can I ask, so we're four years, not quite, out from the adoption of the Tacoma Station area plan. Have there been applicants or interested parties come in with proposals they wanted to do that they haven't been able to do or?
To date, we haven't seen any specific targeted interest for mixed use redevelopment in that area. It's still more people wanting to use existing buildings and manufacturing uses. But what I will say is that with the plan, the Tacoma Station area plan that was done, it really wasn't marketed. We met with brokers and the, the real estate community about this plan. And one of the things that came out is some of them, even developers, didn't necessarily know that we had this new zoning in place. And so what Alex has touched on with the branding of this district, it being a real key point that we need to let people know that we've got this flexibility, so to speak, and that there is an option to do some more. So I think that that would help, but to date, we haven't seen a specific interest in doing mixed use, retail, commercial with residential above, but still demand for people looking for manufacturing production space. And we're, we're full. We're not always able to accommodate that. In that southern portion, the new NMIA zone, we would be combining the current M zone, which was on both sides of it, and then the MTSA four. The idea with this zone is really to protect, protect the existing industry as an employment use area and increase those employment uses. We would want to add production and employment office uses, which would include production office, manufacturing, research and development, even film and audio production or sound stages, those kinds of things. We're trying to get creative in how we allow different uses, but still maintaining that employment focus. And then also increasing the height here. This area, all, all of the zones, I believe, were, were 45 feet. And so we've proposed in this draft 65 feet. Again, that's up for some conversation. And then no residential uses. If you recall, back in May, we came before council for a zoning clarification, just to kind of get a sense. We'd heard through the process at that point, up through May, two public meetings and then multiple advisory group meetings, that there wasn't really an interest in adding additional residential to this area since we already had it up in the north. And so, but, but then we also had a property owner specifically at the Millend site expressing interest in, we'd like to see the more flexibility for residential on our site and on our properties. And so we came before council in May to just kind of get a check, gut check, so to speak, on guidance about where we, where we stand with adding additional residential. And at that time, the decision, the, the policy recommendation, so to speak, was to not add additional residential. It wasn't, anything adopted, as you all know, but just a direction. And so we shared that with planning commission and they, I think, spent some time, definitely spent some time at their hearing in June, talking through this, especially after hearing from the, the property owner at the Millend site. And they have proposed what's before you from their recommendation to add an overlay that would be, consist of that MTSA zone up, up north on that southern quadrant at Milport, 17th, 99, that triangle down there, putting an overlay with a sunset of 10 years. So this will be a key question as I, as we move through the rest of this presentation. Is there a place for more residential? Is this the right place? How, how does that look? What does that look like? And, and where should it be? So rhetorical question at the moment, up for more discussion.
So I'll, I'll touch on infrastructure for just a second. We did analyze the existing sewer water infrastructure in, in the area. And there are definitely projects within your capital improvement plan that are, will happen in this area regardless of what this plan, you know, what the outcome of this, this plan is. We found that there's actually a fair bit of capacity within your sewer and water system right now. So there may be local improvements that would be needed over time, depending on how ultimately development occurs. But from the system itself right now, which is a great thing actually, we don't foresee any significant upgrades needed for the water and sewer system, other than what you have in your, in your CIP. There are likely some pipes in there that are old and those, those will be replaced regardless, but that would be something that you would deal with regardless of this, this plan. So that's a good thing. That's often a huge cost for infrastructure or for development to occur, but that's, that's something that hopefully we won't have to deal with as much within this area. I will say with, when we looked at the eco district framework, part of that was an energy use, like should we do district energy as a part of this, this district? And one reason why we went to solar primarily was that from a district standpoint, district energy is very hard to, to put in even in a greenfield development. And the only way for it to occur really is to tear up your streets. And if you're trying to do it at a district level, it's very hard to, to implement incrementally. And so from a systems piece, that, that's something that we decided probably wasn't the best recommendation for this area, just because it's too hard to implement because you already have a significant amount of lot coverage there. But from a sewer and water standpoint, that's all in the streets, you know, for the most part anyways. And that's, that's a good, you're in a good position for, for those pieces.
So I noticed the, I guess in the eco district chapter, it talked about using McBride as a demonstration street for stormwater. Aren't we paving McBride this year? I mean, is this, is that like something we're looking to do in the near term in conjunction with the repaving project? Or is that sort of a few years out there kind of a question?
My, my understanding, jump in if.
Oh, I just went to get Chuck.
If I misspeak, Chuck can correct me. My understanding of that project is to address some of the rail stormwater issues within, within that area. And there is certainly repaving. When we think of a demonstration project, one of the biggest issues for stormwater, well, there's two issues. One is the right of way. So how do you address stormwater within the right of way? The other piece is on the private side. So if you have a new, a developer coming in that wants to significantly upgrade a warehouse or actually remove a warehouse and build a new building, they're going to have to deal with stormwater on site in some fashion, whether it's a swale or eco roof or, you know, there's a number of things to do. And we felt McBride with this adjacency to Johnson Creek, but also with the, the potential along that corridor, that that could be a good place to start looking at more holistic stormwater treatment. That protects Johnson Creek, but also starts to address some of the issues with the existing development along that corridor. So it's kind of a, it's, it's demonstration in that it's, it needs to be done, but it's also a kind of a place that you could, you could kind of brand and make kind of cool just by fixing some of the existing issues that you have to deal with anyways. So that's why we looked at McBride, not that stretch.
There's also a diagram in the plan that shows the, the cross section of that, of McBride. I'm not sure exactly what page at the moment, but it basically shows some of the improvements that will be made with that repaving. And then that would be phase one. And then, let's see, it's on page RS 69. So it shows the repaving and the addition of a sidewalk, curb and sidewalk. So that's actually, my understanding is that's going to be happening with this.
Next year.
Repaving.
Okay.
And we've talked about how do we also think about what needs to go in the ground before we repave some, some things along that line. So we're in coordination and conversation internally to kind of make sure we, we look at that appropriately as far as fiber maybe or something like that. But, or conduit for fiber. And then the next, the next image below would be a little more of that demonstration, maybe a parkland area that could be utilized in some way.
And the one piece I forgot to mention is, you know, you have, you have the railroad tracks between, which are used about once, once a week as we understand it. So it's still being able to provide that access for the rail, but being able to create some space for those warehouses to maybe develop a little bit differently. And so actually making those rail lines flush with, with the sidewalk. So you could mount them with a car or you could get across them a little bit more safely as a pedestrian. And in the, the previous page, we have an image of city of Renton, which, city of downtown Renton has a rail line going through it twice a day that carries Boeing 737s to their, their plant just north of downtown. And we're actually branding that. We're doing that because it's a cool thing, but it's a way, it's just a way to show that you can have heavy rail in an urban area, but you have to treat it, you know, as a part of the infrastructure, not separate it so that, you know, you can't really get around it. And this might be a good place to, to consider that because the rail is still active.
I also just wanted to, this is great. So the joy of email is that I get messages from employees who aren't at the DIAS. So in next spring, we will be doing McBride. It's reconstruction and it is going to include streets, sidewalks, sewer, water, and storm.
Okay. Great.
You're already on your way. All right. So I've touched briefly on, on the implementation strategy and there's a whole host of different things. You know, we do think about these incrementally. You know, this is, this isn't a greenfield. The city doesn't have, you know, a lot of money. Developers don't have a lot of money. So these things happen over time. So we have looked at it from, you know, from what you can do now, what, to what's going to take, you know, 20 years, years to do. But some of the key things, and we've already hit it a couple of times, is, you know, day one is assign or hire a North Milwaukee industrial area coordinator. That's a person who knows the businesses. That's somebody who can help organize the eco district, which also takes coordination. But, you know, it can really do the outreach and start to think about how you attract those, those types of businesses. And, you know, whether that's a, a part-time or a full-time position would be certainly up to the city, but it is somebody with some dedicated time to, to focus on this, this area. And then there's some other things. There's, you know, regulatory and branding. Those are low hanging fruit that can be done relatively inexpensively. Wayfinding and low cost projects, like how do you get from 17th to Tacoma Station if you're a cyclist and you've never been there, but you're on that great new facility on 17th? So how do you make those types of connections? How do you get downtown? You know, those are some of the things. As you get into, you know, potentially having more money, whether it's urban renewal or grants or, you know, whatever program you choose to finance or a variety of programs, that five to 10 year window is where some of the low cost transportation or other infrastructure improvements might occur. But it's, as you get further out, that's where the larger projects happen, 10 to 20 years. So it does take time, but.
Would you expect that your NMIA coordinator would also be the director or coordinator or make happen the Transportation Management Association, the TMA? Or would that be separate from that?
I think that's certainly possible. I think it depends on, you know, how much you want to put on one person to do that. And if it's managing a Transportation Management Association, which has, you know, parking and transit and other pieces, and then in addition, you know, business attraction, that could be an interesting one stop shop, you know, for, for somebody coming in to, to do that. But yeah, that's certainly, you could certainly organize it that way if that were the path. For larger TMAs, we've seen that as a separate position, but this is a relatively small area. It's about 200 acres. So that might be something you could, you could, you know, cluster, if you will. Good question. All right.
So moving on to the recommendations. Tonight, what staff is asking is to recommend an adoption of the framework plan with the decision of any amendments that are necessary to be clearly defined. So we know that there's some discussion to be had about that, but that's what we're proposing to, as an outcome for this evening. And as Alex mentioned, we did have multiple meetings with the advisory group. And at their last meeting in June, they in general approved the, the framework plan with the caveats that we continue looking at land use zoning and traffic impacts. And so that's really what we've been doing since we last met with them in the beginning of June through our planning commission public hearing, this hearing. And then that would be continued through the, the zoning amendment process in the fall. And so as you know, planning commission had a handful of recommendations. Well, first they had some public comments. One was from Hyberg Garbage on waste management, making that a permitted use. We had included it as a conditional use in the, in this draft. And the reasoning behind that was thinking that we didn't necessarily want to see more of those types of uses. And so making it a conditional use wouldn't disallow it, but would make it maybe a little bit more difficult. And we would be able to see some of the other types of uses that we're outlining for this, this district. But we did hear from, from him. And so planning commission has made a recommendation on making that just permitted. And then we heard from quite a few stakeholders, about six of them, on allowing housing residential on the Millend store site. And so we'll talk about that.
So before we go on, the, the, the conditionally, the Hyberg request, I mean, they're grandfathered, right?
It would be grandfathered.
So they would not have to go through any additional process. But if they wanted to expand because they're a conditional use, that's where they'd have more process by being a conditional use versus an outright permitted use?
Exactly.
Okay.
It could impact them in that way for any expansions and changes that they want to make. But yeah, they'd be grandfathered in.
So the fact that they're grandfathered though, wouldn't, wouldn't be in effect if they wanted to expand? Is that what I understood you to just say?
So, so they are just, they're grandfathered in because they've already been an existing use. And if they did make certain levels of improvement, I don't know what that threshold is, but at a certain amount of improvement to their property that they might propose, if it was a conditional use, they would have to go through a conditional use process.
Because it would change it enough that it took it out of that. Okay.
But they still could stay there and operate. And so to walk through the planning commission recommendations, the first one was about marijuana production and planning commission recommended that as a conditional use in the NMIA zone. So just to remind you kind of what, what it is, it currently is, and I need to look at my notes.
And actually, I'm going to invite Denny to come up for this piece for one second because he found a mistake.
I, I spotted something in the report that was incorrect. And I'm just going to fill in for what Amy was just going to say. What is it today? It is a conditional use in the MTSA zone and a permitted use in the manufacturing zone. And the staff report includes a recommendation for it to be a permitted use, or there's a chart in there, a, a table that shows it as a permitted use in the MTSA. And that was not the intention. The intention, I believe from the planning commission, was that it be a conditional use throughout the district.
But without the buffer thing that was enacted with the buffers?
With the buffer.
Okay.
But, but the, the question that was posed to them was, you know, how, should we, we didn't make it clear initially if it should be a conditional use or a permitted use in the combined area that was MTSA and the M zone, MTSA four and the M zone. Because the way it is today, it's conditional use in the MTSA four and a permitted use in the M. So that was the question to the, to the commission. What should that be?
The permitted always with the buffer?
Whether today.
I mean, that's what we have right now is permitted in the M zone with the buffer.
It's permitted with the 1,500 foot separation.
Right.
In the M zone.
Right.
But that 15 foot, 1,500 foot separation also applies to the conditional use area.
Right.
So what, again, what the staff report includes, it shows it as permitted in the MTSA. And that, that again, was not the intention, I think, of what the planning commission had recommended. Because what we, the only thing we asked them was what should be happening to the MTSA and M zones? And they said, make it a conditional use. Is that right, you guys? That's the way I.
I'm not still following. So what's changing?
What is changing? The M zone where it is permitted today.
Oh, the old MTSA four is now M zone?
Yeah.
But in the M zone, also including like on Johnson Creek and, and some of those other areas?
No, because now it's going to all be zoned NMIA. It would still be a permitted use on Johnson Creek. It would still be separated by 1,500 feet.
On Johnson Creek Boulevard.
I think you've actually made it, yep.
One more time. The M, it's today, marijuana production is a permitted use in the M zone. And it is a conditional use in all of the MTSA zones.
Right.
We also have a 1,500 foot separation buffer. So when we make the changes now, what, we were asking the commission and what they they said was, okay, so if you create this NMIA zone, is it permitted or is it conditional? They said, make it conditional. So, because we're combining MTSA 4 and M into one zone here, the M-zone will still exist out on Johnson Creek Boulevard.
That's...
And it will have 1,500-foot separation.
And it will still be conditional, I mean, it'll still be permitted out there.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry this is so confusing. And I just, nobody probably would even noticed, but I was looking at, I was looking back through the chart that was in this document, and under MTSA, it said permitted. No, that's not right, so...
So, you're saying the new NMIA zone, which is basically the old M-zone and, yeah, the map up there, the blue... Zones together. Their recommendation is conditional use.
That is what I thought.
Okay. And do we have grow operations now?
We have one.
One, in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think there still might be under construction. I'm not 100% sure.
Probably down to all those hearings.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Denny. There is one full grow operation in the district currently, and three processors, but they don't count as the grow. And so, if, you know, making this a conditional use with the 1,500-foot buffer, we would roughly be able to accommodate two more in the far corners of this new proposed zone, depending on how it all mapped out. So, let's get back to that other slide. Where was I? Here. Okay. So, that's the first one. Second one is consideration of building heights. So, we had proposed in the plan 65 feet, and Planning Commission would like to consider creating, possibly looking at going a little bit higher, and considering floor area ratio and height bonuses to accomplish that, to get to those heights. And staff is suggesting that that is actually an important thing to consider, and maybe going, allowing a little extra height. Even 65 feet could get you a three-story building if you've got clear heights for industrial on a first floor or something. And so, maybe to get something in the future, like a New York building, if that ever became a viable opportunity, that's six stories. And so, that's more like 90 feet. And it's something to think about. And so, staff is suggesting that if we think about going higher, maybe 90 feet is a little bit more appropriate, and could accommodate up to a five-story building with some clear height needs being met for industrial uses on ground floors. And then, also looking at an FAR of up to four to one. And that those additional height, if we did decide to go, or council recommended to go higher, that that could, based on Planning Commission's recommendation, maybe be tied to some FAR and height bonuses to get there. Another thing to think about. The third item is to permit 20,000 square foot of retail per development, building or development, and 30,000 square feet as a conditional use in the modified MTSA zone. So, currently, today, the current zoning, just MTSA 3, so where the ODOT site is, kind of that lower portion of the north, that is what we allow a conditional use for up to 30,000. Everything else in the district has been kind of, in the MTSA, has been at 20,000 square feet. So, we had been proposing through this plan to keep it at 20,000, and Planning Commission would like to see a conditional use be maintained and expanded throughout that whole MTSA zone. And that's...
But they weren't proposing that for the NMIA zone, just for the MTSA?
Not for the NMIA.
I was having trouble following that when I watched their hearing, to be honest.
With the exception of if there's an overlay, which we'll get to. But just to point out, from staff's perspective on this particular one, we agree that 20,000 per square feet of building or redeveloped area is appropriate. Maybe that could allow for some kind of a grocery store, a smaller scale, smaller format Trader Joe's, or something like that, where we know we actually have a need. So, maybe that could be a good thing. But it sort of limits the ability of having to go too high and possibly getting more big-box retail that we know would probably prevail in this area if it was allowed. So, there's that fine line. What the exact right number is, is hard to know, but we know from our research that 20,000 seemed to be a good sweet spot for getting some density of mixed-use commercial, but also not expanding it too far to get uses that could really overtake the district.
So, does that at all affect the 5,000-square-foot individual retail?
Not in the NMIA. That's the...
NMIA, but in the...
So, we're just, this one is just getting at the north, the new MTSA zone, and expanding to allow up to 30,000 conditional use across that MTSA. We would still be retaining the 5,000 square feet per individual, individual per building for the NMIA, as proposed in the plan. And then, allowing waste management as a permitted use in the zone, we touched on this briefly, but basically, staff had originally proposed that it be a conditional use to discourage more and additional uses of this type, not necessarily, but to keep what we have and to maintain what we have from that grandfathering in of Hyberg Garbage. But it would also restrict them from certain expansions on their property. And then, I believe this is the last one, the creation of an overlay zone, using the modified MTSA zone, and applying that to those parcels in the southern quadrant of the new NMIA zone, south of Millport. And so, what Planning Commission has recommended is that that be overlaid for a sunset of up to 10 years, and it would allow residential in that quadrant, but excludes standalone multifamily residential. So, mixed-use ground-floor commercial with residential above would be allowed, and live-work, and live-work. So, in summary, these are the questions that are before you, and I just, we've hit on all of those with the exception of the last one, which is the modification of those two transportation maps. And that was based on conversations that we've had with some property owners, both in Milwaukee, in the north, but on the west side of McLaughlin Boulevard, near Clatzip Street and 24th, and some concerns about adding a road connection and a bike-ped connection on 24th, which is city-owned right-of-way, that would, through a bridge connection, extend into Portland, which on the other side is industrial-zoned area immediately adjacent across the creek, but then does get into residential on the other side. So, what we're proposing is that we modify the language in the descriptions of those maps, where we would take off the drawing of the connection, that there's something specific to happen there, and talk about it a little bit more openly, that something needs to happen from a bike-ped and a roadway connection for that area, should redevelopment of that side of the district warrant it. And so, basically, what we're looking at is if, depending on the kind of new development and at the density that it's currently, even currently today, I think it is actually 65 feet already. So, potentially residential, three-to-five-story residential mixed-use development could happen on that site, and we're not sure exactly what would trigger another egress, but because we already know those intersections on McLaughlin Boulevard are failing, any additional traffic that's put out onto McLaughlin could affect that. And so, the reason for having another roadway connection is to get that egress. Where it should be possibly is still up for question. We put it on the map at 24th because that's the most direct. We own city right-of-way at southeast 24th, and we have talked with the city of Portland across the creek to say, you know, what would this mean for your plans? How does this jive? And those are local streets on the other side that, in concept, could match up with our plan to have a connection there. But there would definitely need to be continued coordination and discussion with them. The other question is, there's the roadway connection, 24th. There's also, in the Tacoma Station area plan, there was a bike connection going west on Clatzip, across Johnson Creek, the other way into the park on Portland's side. And that's a very viable option, too. I think city of Portland is open to continued conversation about what that would look like and how that would affect their park and how that plays out. There used to be an old bridge there that's no longer there post a flood, but it's something for us to think about. So, what we would like to do with those two maps is remove the actual drawings of where the connections would be, and change the language to be a little bit less specific on the actual route, so that when we go through more discussions with Portland, city of Portland, and also when we know a development that's coming in, and they're going to need to propose something, that's when it would be identified based on a developer proposing a particular path, and then vetting it that way, so...
So, at this time, what you're proposing is that at this time, that just goes away, that the path, the bridge, the bridge over Johnson Creek at 24th and... So, that it would not specify which way connections go? That it would just talk generically about improving connections?
It would say, basically, we need a bike-ped connection across Johnson Creek, and that could either go west or north. But we won't even specify that. It just would say, there needs to be some kind of a connection over Johnson Creek for bike-ped in the future.
In the future, future, future.
And then, for a roadway, that there should be some, there needs to be an alternative egress, depending on redevelopment, and what that forces, depending on what size and scale of redevelopment. So, it could...
And there's two homes in that area, and one that this would come through, if it were left like it is, would actually be on their property or come through their property?
Yes, so we met with the property owners, several property owners, or a couple of property owners, but one was right there on 24th. They have their residence there. It's budding Johnson Creek and then 24th, and they're actually in the right-of-way.
And right on the Portland and Milwaukee city lines.
Exactly. Some of their, they have a couple of parcels, and some of it goes on to Portland's side. And so...
And their house is sitting in the right-of-way.
It's about three feet into the right-of-way, roughly. And so, that is definitely a concern that we understand their concern. We went and met with those property owners to hear about, you know, what they're concerned about and what that might mean for them. It's possible that a road, well, right-of-way exists there, and a road potentially could be paved through there without completely taking out their house, but building a bridge might be another question. And it's just, it's hard to know exactly the extent of what would need to happen to build something, but we really are just looking at a couple of options. If egress is needed and density increases in that area, or is proposed to increase, something's going to have to happen. I think our engineering department's going to have to require something, and it might be left to them, the developer, to propose something. And so, it could be 24th, which is the most direct path, as it appears on a map. And then, there's also 23rd. I don't have the map, but 23rd...
Actually, I was going to ask you to leave a map up when we get public comment, so...
Yes, I think...
I was looking at Google Earth a while ago.
Yeah, I'm just going to go... Do I have a map? Sure. So, does my cursor show up there? No. Basically, you see how 23rd, that's the road network, on the west side up there. That was another consideration. How do you get 23rd to tunnel under or over Spring Water Corridor and then connect down to Ochico? But 23rd is not all in city of Milwaukee's right-of-way. It's, a majority of it actually is in Portland, and then you are dealing with tunneling or somehow getting through Spring Water Corridor. And then, there's properties that actually have buildings in the way that could really limit getting through and then connecting to Ochico. But that's been something that had been talked about in the past. It's just that we don't have full jurisdiction on that street. And then, there is a connection that's on the Tacoma Station area plan, but not explained. I can show you. If you can see this, so that same area up there in the north, there's a dotted line. There's Clatzip and 24th are going through, you know, perpendicular to it, but below is a dotted white line. And it's not actually identified in the plan, in the narrative about what that means, but it does go through other properties to get back to Ochico's, and you're still having to get through...
The Spring Water.
The Spring Water. So, there are other options, and it's just kind of trying to understand which one might make the most sense. But what we're trying to plan for is that future redevelopment, that something's probably going to have to happen, depending on getting another 100, 300-something units in that area. We don't really know what would trigger it.
Okay. All right.
So, the last slide that we had was the, kind of walking through the...
Look at you.
Just mentioning that the idea tonight would be, if possible, to have a decision on whether to adopt, or to, maybe we need to move on to another continued discussion on August 1st, and we're scheduled to come on August 1st if that's needed, with the comp plan and zoning amendment process in the fall.
Okay. Great. Any questions for them? I'm sure we'll have some later.
Sure, it'll come up in the discussion.
Any questions that need clarification now? No?
Not at this moment. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, if you could put up that one, not the last one, but the one before that that you had up, that one. Yes, that's a good one. I know a lot of folks have been waiting. We have, like, six or seven ready to testify, and actually, those came later, so they go in the back. But we need to take a little break. A lot of us drank too much water. And we'll come back at five minutes to eight. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good break. Thanks. Bye. Bye. Thank you. Okay. Great. Any questions for them? I'm sure we'll have some later.
Sure, it'll come up in the discussion.
Any questions that need clarification now?
Not before it's--
No?
Not at this moment. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, if you could put up that one--
Do you want the zoning--
Not the last one, but the one before that that you had up, that one. Yes, that's a good one. I know a lot of folks have been waiting. We have like six or seven ready to testify. And actually, those came later, so they go in the back. But we need to take a little break. A lot of us drank too much water. And we'll come back at five minutes to eight. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good break.
Bye. Bye. Thank you. 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 Bye.
And so, number one, I point that out, that you're dumping traffic immediately there. But even more so, as we, my wife and I, developed our piece of property and put our facility in, which is a real nice industrial facility for our art, is that we had to work very closely with the city of Portland. And one of their stipulations for our permits in our construction was that we could, we were zoned for the industrial. We could do that, but we could have absolutely no retail out of the space. And their main deal for that was that the surrounding area streets and the neighborhood would not stand the type of traffic to put some retail in. So I don't know what they're telling you now, but at that time, they were adamant about it. And they pointed out at that time, too, that our main truck access would be only in off of McLaughlin and back out to McLaughlin. So from a truck standpoint, you're not gaining anything. From a standpoint of cars, you're dumping into an area that they were adamant about. And I know they told the adjoining business, which we call the Arnell's Property on 24th, they told them the same thing. So that's one thing. The other point I'd like to make, besides the other, is that you've pointed out that, you know, this way, you've got access to it. Your bridge that you're proposing, one of the side and one of the abutments would definitely be in another jurisdiction, Portland and the street improvements and the traffic and everything like that. The actual other abutment would partially be in Portland, too, that's on your side, because there is a lot on that side of the street that Mike owns that is city of Portland. He pays taxes on it. It's Multnomah County and city of Portland. The other is-
We need to keep you three minutes, so if you can-
The last point I would make is this is the 100-year floodplain. It floods regularly. That property where you're talking about the bridge is underwater. Last time was two years ago. It's distinctly underwater. And you start to put abutments in, we're going to have a real problem with the hydrology there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Stauffer?
Good evening. My name's Catherine Stauffer. 2405 Southeast Glatsup, which I guess is MTSA area, too. I'm directly across the street from the person who just testified.
Across the river.
Across the river, yeah. Our house encroaches, you were talking about my house earlier, on 24th Street by three feet. So the plan to put a, to put a bridge over Johnson Creek would destroy our home. It was discussed that there might be another alternative where a bridge can be placed directly up against the house. But we have three lots. Our only access to our house comes from, from the, from the street, from that angle. We would have no way to access our property if a bridge or a road was, a bridge, actually. And our house is actually quite close to the creek. So there'd be no access to our house and no place within, I think, four or, four or five blocks to legally park two cars. So that's a considerable problem for us. It sounds like the access issues are pretty daunting for our whole street, you know? I definitely have listed the details of what they are, and I wouldn't, I would like to recommend that maybe the, the area be zoned for lesser density and intensity as the solution. We have eight active businesses on the street and two residences. And it seems to function okay. But it seems like it, it just might be that a lower density might be the solution instead of a really, really difficult building project. Doesn't seem like there's a good access point. My fiance, fiance and I are engaged. We have been living in this house for 12 years. We have a farm on three lots. We have ducks. We intend to live in this house until we die. And I really don't want to live with this over my head for the next 20 years. I don't want the fear that I'm going to be homeless when I'm 70 because of this. So if it, ideally, if you could eliminate, this is one particular option from your plan, that would, that would cause, that would save us a lot of stress over the years, because it doesn't seem like it's a very good option if you really, really look at it. And if you're, you're interested in actually looking at it, I'm happy to show any of you what your, what, what your plan would include. The flooding issues are a very large issue. He started talking about them and was cut off. Most likely, a, a bridge, and he's also a civil engineer. He explained to me that the bridge where, where you want to place it could very easily create a dam that would cause very intensive flooding, where there's an intensive flooding problem coming off of Johnson Creek, right before the Acropolis, right before Tacoma. The water leaves the creek before Tacoma, comes over, and then floods back on the other side of 24th, back into Johnson Creek. So if you're creating a bridge there, it just, you know, it's a hydrological problem. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Peter Stark?
Madam President, Counselors, thank you. My name is Peter Stark. I reside at 2939 Northwest Cornell Road. My firm represents the Oregon Worsted Company that owns and operates the Mill and Store at 9701 Southeast McLaughlin, the Boromar Building and various other properties in City of Milwaukee. And along with this letter, I have a series of letters that consultants would like to submit.
Are these the same letters that were in the Planning Commission packet?
Some are, some are not.
Okay.
New testimony. This is a really important map. This is actually an existing conditions map. And I want to point out that the pink area is the flood zone. And if you look at the lower triangle, all of the property of the Mill and Stores within that floodplain. So we hired a specialist to look at floodplain issues, and we determined that the impact is substantial. We presented this testimony to Planning Commission. There was a lot of thoughtful consideration, and they agreed that an overlay to allow housing at this location would be appropriate. So as shown in this map, not only is this property impacted, but the adjacent property as well to the west is impacted. And our consultant has told us that after the flooding in 1996, the engineers determined that it was impractical, impractical to make it floodproof. It would be impossible to push the dirt, if you will, a fill scenario, which you might normally do in a floodplain condition. And the only way to, to improve the site would be to put the building on stilts. And currently, the Mill and Stores in jeopardy. If there were another flood, it could be condemned. The last flood, they had to move all of the product out of the building, and it made it unusable. So it's, it's currently an issue. If the current zoning were to come into play, whatever building is put in place would have to be built on stilts. The third item is that, in effect, if you build it on stilts, you're going to put parking underneath. You have some kind of structured parking. If you build structured parking, then all of a sudden, an industrial use becomes impractical, because typically, industrial buildings need to be on grade. There is one unique example, the New York, that was presented by staff earlier. We had our consultants, Eric Hovey, who's an economist, look at that, thinking maybe we could go that route, and determine that that would be an impossible scenario as well. In fact, the New York may be an impossible scenario for anywhere within the north Milwaukee area. And I'll let Eric speak to that. High-rise, high-rise office is allowed under the MNIA. And again, if that were something we would pursue, we would be willing to do it. But again, given the financial constraints of building structured parking, just doing office will not make it viable. So we came back to the only viable, feasible economic development at the site was housing. And you're going to hear a lot of testimony about this, but the choice in front of Planning Commission was as follows. You either have a choice of allowing the site to be developable, developable under some scenario, or not developable at all. So if you're looking to create some employment, my client is very willing to create employment opportunities to this site, and we're going to show you what that design could look like. But if you keep the current planning as it's proposed, the site will essentially be condemned to nothing. They won't be able to develop anything on the site. And I, I will say, I was, I do sit on the NMIA Committee. I have at least four other, four other members that also agree that housing at the site would be appropriate. So I'm not alone in this request. And the committee did speak out and say that housing should be considered at this location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you have something you're giving staff to give to us? Oh, you only have one. And you said you're, someone's presenting a concept? That's, no, I just don't want a clarification of who's going to do that. Okay, Mr. Hove, Hovey? Hovey?
It's me.
All right.
Eric Hovey, 2408 Main Street, Vancouver, Washington. Good evening. I'm an economic and development consultant. I've been in practice for more than 30 years. And I testified to the Planning Commission in support of their request for zoning to allow mixed-use residential above ground floor commercial at the Mill and Store site. From our analysis, it's the only way to maintain the economic viability of a property that is virtually 100% in the 100-year floodplain. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to support this recommendation. However, the staff report now requests that the Planning Commission recommendation be overturned. Your reconsideration is requested for the reason that, as Peter stated, if mixed use is not allowed, economic use of the Oregon Worsted property will cease when the existing obsolete and flood damaged structure can no longer safely and profitably support continued Mill and Store operations. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about whether it is possible to build new multi-story industrial buildings in Milwaukee. Echo Northwest, the consultant for the framework plan, and I have both concluded that a multi-story industrial office development like the New York building in northwest Portland is simply not feasible at this site unless the project is heavily subsidized. Echo Northwest concluded in its pages RS 182 and 183 of the staff report or package, that, that a public subsidy of more than $10 million is needed to make a project feasible. And even that calculation is overly optimistic. It overlooks the requirement to construct parking under the new industrial building so that enclosed building spaces are all elevated to above the 100-year floodplain level. This means the public subsidy required will be even greater than what Echo Northwest has estimated to date. The fact is that the only economically viable reuse is one that can afford to pay for the cost, the added cost of structured parking, so that all enclosed building spaces can be elevated above the floodplain. And the only use that can afford structured parking at this time at this location is multi-story residential. Your reconsideration is also requested to correct other shortcomings of the staff report, which will be described in the letter that I will be providing. I do have extra copies for the record. In closing, the very first objective of the framework plan as drafted is to support existing businesses as the district evolves. If this site cannot be feasibly redeveloped, the Mill and Store will eventually disappear, whether with the next flood or as the 63-year-old former Omark Building becomes ever more obsolete. Because of the floodplain requirement to build structured parking, there is no industrial use that will be able to afford building at rates that are anywhere near competitive with the rest of the Milwaukee clackems market. So in closing, your direction for a common sense framework plan and rezon is important if this property is to serve as a place of employment and economic vitality, not just now, but for the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Basinger?
Council President and Counselors, my name is Jerry Basinger. I'm an architect and was asked by Oregon Worsted to develop a concept for what a future development on the Mill and Site might look like. I'll see if I can operate this. Is there a page down here? Here we go.
Amy, just, he might need some help. Oh, no, he's got it. Okay.
Yeah, well, if I just click. So the property is highlighted in the blue. You can see it's fully bordered on a third of the perimeter by the Johnson Creek. This is the FEMA floodplain map. You can see the entire site, as well as the property on the other side, is all underwater. And that was a county floodplain map. Currently, Milllands has a 65,000 square foot store on the site. It's a kind of a quasi-retail, quasi-industrial use, because they, they have bulky goods and they sell mainly to builders that are renovating. So here's the concept. I've turned north, so north is down. But we have to locate any new facilities up and out of the floodplain, which means raising the floor elevation some six or seven feet. I don't know that we have a survey to tell you exactly that. So the concept would be to develop a replacement store on the site, roughly 30,000 square feet, a little less than half, but within what's allowed in the district to the north, to replace parking pretty much as it, there's a pointer, as it exists on grade. And then to structure parking for multifamily that would go up another four stories. And this is an example. It's not by any means a final plan, but basically, you could get something on the order of 120 units in the additional four stories. And the total height would be about 60 feet. In Portland, there's a lot of development, which is going up one more floor. If the height were allowed, that probably would be desirable.
So you're saying four stories residential over the retail?
Over the retail.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that all fits within 60 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Six stories?
Well, total of five in this concept. So five, excuse me, the retail level is somewhere between 18 and 20 feet required height, plus 10 per floor for the four residential totaling 58 or 60.
And there's not, but isn't there a level of parking underneath?
Not underneath. So in this concept, we've raised the floor up, say, six feet above the floodplain. The parking for the retail would be on that grade, on the existing grade. We're not filling. And then the parking for the residential takes off on stilts, essentially, over the retail parking. So the longer-term residential parking is on stilts. It's structured. And I don't know that we have the most efficient layout, but we're showing about 150 spaces. So it is feasible. And as you develop the infrastructure and the bike pass and pedestrian pass, it's a little bit more of a hike, but I think one residents would find worthwhile, and particularly to take advantage of the location along Johnson Creek.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're saying there would be retail on the bottom?
Yes.
So without a flood concern? Because you're just raising it by many feet, or what?
We would have to put that retail store on stilts. So this is the current floor elevation. Whoops.
So that's what you're saying, six or seven feet?
And we would raise it on stilts. Not enough space under it to park under it, but there would be space under the rest of the structured parking.
So-
If we're allowed to build short-term parking, essentially where it exists today in the floodplain.
But I guess I misunderstood earlier. I thought that you couldn't use the stilt concept, because it was, it only pencils out if it's housing. Is that what you're saying? It doesn't pencil out if it was-
It pencils in part because it's a mixed-use structure. So we put in one set of footings, and then we're going five stories rather than one story. So I specialize in, in retail and mixed-use design. I've never, in over 40 years of practice, designed a retail facility that was one story with structured parking. There's almost no place in the country where the land value is high enough for that to make any economic sense.
Okay. When someone says that there is absolutely zero economic, economic value to this land if, if housing is not included, that's accurate? Because I'm, I'm seeing a concept here where there's stilts and there's some sort of retail.
Yep. It, it, it makes sense, but the retail by itself as a standalone use, as it is today, would need a land value probably four or five times what the land value is here.
Okay.
So we have looked at it in San Francisco, for example. It can make sense, but only when the land value's $100 or $150 a square foot. Then you replicate land by structuring parking.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hyberg?
Hi, my name's Brian Hyberg. I reside at 14825 Southeast River Forest Drive in Oak Grove. I'm, one of the first things I'd like to ask is, Scott, could you come up with what, what's allowed in the garbage zone currently? My problem here is every time garbage is mentioned, it's not in my backyard. We're a trucking company. We're not allowed to store anything on our property. We've been there for 20 years. We've just invested over $700,000 in a compressed natural gas fueling site.
Does that mean you're running trucks with natural gas?
That's correct.
Okay.
The county, as a favor, turned around and taxed us $11,000 more per year, because we put in an environmentally friendly option to the diesel trucks, which was something we hadn't bargained for. We employ over 50 people that pay wages that are family wages that, that people can live on with benefits. And I'm, I'm sitting here frustrated because we have this site, we've been here for 20 years, we've never had a problem. The zoning that is allowed basically doesn't allow us to do anything related to garbage. We're a trucking company. And it sounds, from all the proposals that are coming up, that we're trying to turn the north industrial area into the new pearl of Milwaukee. And there's warehouses, manufacturing jobs, there's, there's semi-trucks and trailers. I mean, our drivers come in from midnight until 6:00 in the morning, going into Portland, because we're not allowed to provide service in the city of Milwaukee. So our trucks are out working, they go to their disposal facility, whether it's recycling, garbage, or yard debris. They come back, they park their trucks, and hook them up to the compressed natural gas. And we do the same thing the next day. To be, to have been here for 20 years, and now having the city suggest that we go to a conditional use, just doesn't make sense to me. It's frustrating to me. And the last thing I want to do is be in front of a governmental body doing public speaking, but this is a very important issue. And if Scott can address what is allowed in our zoning right now, I'd appreciate it.
So Denny actually handed over his computer to me. This category comprises businesses that provide garbage and recycling hauling, including fleet, parking and maintenance. Storage of waste or recycling materials collected by a waste management business for any period of time is not permitted.
We're a trucking company. And I'm being told that, under this proposal, that we're not going to be allowed to operate. The Planning Commission recommends that we have the outright use.
Well, that's the question I asked to clarify with staff. So you're grandfathered in. Nothing about this project changes your current operations. It does affect you if you-
If you want to grow.
If you sought to expand.
Every business wants to expand, of course. And the steps and the expense to go through a conditional use on an operation that we've already had for 20 years with no problems doesn't make sense to me. And we shouldn't have to do that. The, the Planning Commission has recommended that we be outright allowed as we currently are. This is, we're not asking for a conditional use. We're asking not to be placed in that position when we've proven that we're, we fit the, the area, we do a good job, we're environmentally friendly, we employ 50-plus people at, at good-paying jobs. It seems as though we're meeting the goals of the city of Milwaukee under this plan. And, and we're in an area that we don't bother anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Is your, is your facility what's oftentimes called like a hauler barn? Is that what that is, or not necessarily?
I don't know what a hauler barn is, but I mean, literally what happens is-
Just where the trucks go back after they've done-
The trucks-
All the route.
Trucks go out, pick up, go to the landfill, recycling plant, yard debris facility, empty, hose out, bring the trucks back, park. We're converting our fleet over to compressed natural gas. We still have some diesel trucks. And the trucks park. They bring in their paperwork into the office. We do our customer service out of the building on the site. Phone, that's all phone, very little traffic. And the drivers come in and the next morning, start their trucks and go out into the field. Go out-
And truck maintenance.
Maintenance, okay.
And go out into the field in, in Portland to, to provide the service. So to be placed under conditional use, to expand, isn't fair, isn't right, shouldn't happen.
And before the Planning Commission, you testified something about dumping glass at 3:00 AM and how you didn't have to worry because it didn't-
Right.
There was nobody to be disturbed by it, right?
Right.
So that is part of the, I mean, you have trucks coming in late-
Yes.
And you have some noise associated.
Yes. And, and we don't bother anyone. That's the idea. We're, we abut the new Max Light Rail line, which took part of our property. We abut 224. We're east of the water tower. And it's, it's an amazing location for us. We don't bother anyone. We used to be in a little facility behind the Acropolis Club across the Johnson Creek in a floodplain. You know, that wasn't appropriate. Where we're at now is appropriate. We're out of the floodplain. We're, we're in industrial area and-
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Scott Churchill?
I only have 37 minutes left on my computer, so I turned it off for now. Thank you, Council President Beatty, fellow counselors. Scott Stauffer, city manager, city attorney, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I think we've heard a lot of experts about this property and about this whole zone. I think the overall plan is very good. I support the overall plan. I think the density around the light rail station is supported, is appropriate. I do think that there is some economic viability that should be considered on the overlay. So I am here supporting and urging the city council to support the Planning Commission recommendation to create the overlay of the modified MTSA zone, allowing mixed-use residential development for that quad, well, actually, this map has changed, but the section, the southwest section of the site as well, on the west side of the highway. So. And I also want to point out that, and I think it's been said by others, that Rick Anderson, who is also a member of the NMIA Committee Member from Anderson-Dye, supported this. Denise Emmerly Baker, NMIA Committee Member from Historic Milwaukee. Dan Caulfield, NMIA Committee Member from Alpha Stoneworks. And Kenneth Simpson, NMIA Committee Member, all supported this overlay support. So I urge you to look carefully and not override what the Planning Commission thoughtfully really considered. It, it is a difficult situation. There are some things that don't work in two dimensions on the overall site plan that this overlay will help solve. So I encourage you to consider that. Thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dietrich? Ah, that's a different Mr. Dietrich. Okay. I was gonna say-
Howard Dietrich III. I live at 1500 Southwest Fifth Avenue. I'm sorry about, my parents couldn't be here today, but I'd like to read a letter from my mother. The Oregon Worsted Company was founded in 1918. We will be 100 years old next year. We need a zoning overlay to continue to exist. Oregon Worsted Company has employed over 100,000 people, most of which have lived in Milwaukee. We have supported many civic events, concerts, parades, and currently donate space for autistic children at A-CAP and at Johnson Creek Watershed. In 1981, my father died and the business became a woman-owned business. 95% of our employees are women. In 1993, ODOT required that we, that we moved the Mill and Store as they build an over crossing at Tacoma and McLaughlin Boulevard. The city encouraged us to relocate the Mill and Store to the former Omark Industries building and gave us an easement on Milwaukee's land for our storm water treatment facility. The land is about three and a half acres, and the building is 65,000 square feet. The city applauded our remodeling efforts and installing revolutionary daylighting illumination and storm water treatment systems. We are non-conforming use, without grandfather rights to rebuild because, because we are in the Blamette River floodzone. In 1996, our property had 46 inches of water covering the site. In 2016, we promoted the city's rezoning efforts. That is before the commission now. It was our understanding that the plan was to help the current landowners and their businesses. Because our building is 63 years old and might not survive another flood, we have looked into building a new building on the site. We hired an economist and found that we could not rebuild the Mill and Store under the proposed rezoning and because of the floodplain conditions, and our need to have, have to be elevated. Our economist indicates our plan will have to include a residential component to be financially feasible. We have the approval of our neighbors and the Downtown Business Association. Because our property is completely in the floodplain, we ask that the commission put it, put on zoning, a zoning overlay on this site to rebuild the Mill and Store with a residential component. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dietrich, do you have a copy of that letter for the record?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the testimony. Anybody else out there? Going once, going twice? Going once, going twice? All right, so-- Does staff wish to respond to or clarify any comments made during the testimony? Do you guys need a break, or are you--
We want a break. Um--
So I do have a couple of clarifications, and there's a question we haven't had a chance to connect on. So let me, I'll walk through a couple of just clarifications for the most part. I just wanted to remind council that the new NMIA zone is actually increasing flexibility in that area from what the M-zone and the MTSA 4 are already allowed by adding some commercial up to the 5,000 for an individual use of retail, 20,000 per development. And so that would be new to the district that wasn't already, and then also increasing the heights to 65 feet. So we have added some flexibility on what's proposed. I just wanted to point that out. And then it's my understanding, when we heard from Mr. Stark and a couple of others on the Dietrich site, that it would be possible for the Millen store to rebuild within its existing footprint without disturbing additional floodplain area. So sticking with that same footprint, they would have to go up, but in talking with the engineering director, it's my understanding, and if Chuck wants to add more, he can, but that they would need to go up at least one to two feet to get out of the floodplain. But from what our discussions were internally, it was not six to seven feet. So it could be feasible essentially to build just a little bit higher and then still do ground floor retail with something.
I think the options are, you could either floodproof, and they had done some studies of that and found that floodproofing wasn't feasible. But what you can do is use that same footprint and build up one foot above the 100-year flood level to meet it. But they don't have to do it all on stilts. The calculations for the floodplain have assumed that that area is taken up by a building. So the floor area needs to be higher, but the foundation could basically take up that space. That makes sense.
And so they only need to go up a couple of feet, you're saying, above existing grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you guys can see Chuck back there, and he's rolling his eyes and have said something wrong, he can jump up.
He's not jumping up.
I'm right over here.
All right.
I also wanted to respond, I think it was to Mr. Hovey. He referred to the ECO Northwest study that's in your packet, and it was mentioned that there's a gap of $10 million to do a full multi-story industrial office, which is true. It's $8 million in the ECO report. But there was a range of options for what could be done on the site, and one was commercial and manufacturing retrofit, which had a gap of 137,000. So there is a gap across the board, all the opportunity sites today at this point in time with our current market show a gap, and they range. But what we kind of got at through our planning process was that there's this opportunity in some cases, and maybe that's not the right fit for this particular site, but that retrofit is one option. So I just wanted to make that clarification that, yes, there is a large gap to do multi-story industrial, but that might not be the only gap.
Option. So I'm looking for that now. He said 182. So does it address office space and what the--
So it's on RS 182 and 183, and I did look up office rents. Is that where you're getting at?
Well, I was just, for now, I just wanted to know what ECO Northwest said about, I do have a question about office rents that I sent you earlier, but I wanted to know what ECO Northwest--
So basically, the multi-story industrial office assumed a new owner purchased the land, demolished the existing building, and constructed a new multi-story industrial building with 50% of the interior devoted to office use.
Okay.
And the office rents that ECO used as an average were around $13 a square foot, knowing that this particular district hasn't had that type of use. So it was kind of an average where other reports we've had in the downtown area have been around $15 a square foot, or most recently, $18 to $22 a square foot for office.
Okay. So that's a significant increase over what we were told back just a few years ago--
2014 or so.
With moving forward Milwaukee, okay.
It is in the downtown, which would be a little different context.
Different, right, right. I understand that.
And then, so if there aren't any more questions on that-- I think we've spoken to the conditional use on the waste management piece, but we definitely understand the concerns with Hyberg, and I think that either way that council goes, we could live with whatever the recommendation is based on what Planning Commission has said too. But the conditional use was something that we were thinking would prevent additional, maybe you can explain this better, but--
I guess one thing about rereading the definition, it's actually very narrowly written for a use that is essentially this use. Garbage, you know, a fleet operation for hauling garbage. So I mean, I think it was--
Written to prohibit that, not to allow that.
They testified during the MTSA process, and that's the way it was written up, is to allow that use specifically.
No storage of--
No.
Waste, any kind of-- So is there any tool in between conditional use and permitted use? Is there any way to give a grandfathered-in person the right to expand without saying, opening up the whole rest of the zone for that use?
You know, I've seen codes before that have essentially done that for uses that are established before a certain point in time. So that's one way of doing it, is adding a timeframe.
Okay.
There's probably some others too, but that's the one that comes to mind.
So in other words, are you saying that it would just be sort of like X business having, you know, X type of business, or any business having been here for, let me just pick a number, 20 years--
A use--
You know, or--
It would be a use that exists at the time this ordinance was adopted is permitted. Any new use goes through a conditional use. Tim may have an opinion about that.
Denny, if this would be an appropriate place potentially for a use under prescribed conditions, that is, the use is permitted outright if it meets certain objective standards that, I don't know how you define this particular use, but you would limit its impact by defining through objective terms what makes it outright permitted.
But we don't, but I think you were saying, we don't want, if we didn't want more of those coming in, then if they met those conditions, you're saying they could. So if we wanted to grandfather in for a longer period of time, for sure, Mr. Hyberg, then the way you're describing it, a new business could come in that does the same--
And qualify.
Yes. One way to further limit it would be to have a specific map that would define on which parcels a use under prescribed conditions is allowed. So for example, in northwest Portland, you're allowed to have parking structures, but only on, I think, eight mapped sites. They're permitted, but they're not permitted everywhere, just on the map sites. So that's another tool potentially.
I guess one thing I might add, recall that basically what we're asking for tonight is some general direction for code preparation. So you could, if that's the direction you wanted to go, you could let us know, and that's what we can explore in code language, so we don't have to solve the issue tonight.
Other questions from council for staff regarding clarification of the testimony?
I had a couple of questions. How large was the advisory group?
We had two. It was a project advisory group and then a technical advisory group, and we ended up meeting together. It was designed to be two separate groups, but it just made more sense in the end to combine. And so there were around 35 people total, and I would say on average, 22 or so showed up each time.
And residential use is not allowed currently in that southwest quadrant?
No.
No.
Okay.
The two advisory groups that you're talking about, did that include the representatives from the neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, just to follow up on that question, how many survey, how many responses did you receive in the public?
I believe it was 100 responses.
Yeah, right around 100.
Okay.
And have we received much, or any, from the property owner that's across the Johnson Creek that's also in the floodplain in the bottom left?
That's the same property.
Oh, it's the same, I'm sorry.
Well, the big one is the same property, but the little one that's near the Millport intersection is a different--
That is a different property owner.
That's a different property owner. That's that--
The three clustered buildings.
Some temp thing. And like an HVAC company or something? Yeah, pro temp.
We have not heard from them.
Well, and I guess as to that bigger building, I mean, I was a little confused by the Planning Commission testimony of, and the discussion there about, are they, but I guess going from what we've heard tonight, they're really only talking about the Millen's building. They're not talking about that other building wanting the residential.
That's what they've pointed to. I know that there is ownership across both parcels, but yes, when we met with them, that's before any hearings, that's what was made apparent to us, is that it really was only that Millen store site, which further complicated staff's interpretation of some options to, if it was both sites, both sides of Johnson Creek, perhaps that lent itself a little bit more to this compatibility, the question about compatibility, if we were to have it be closer, the site that's closer to 17th, if that was included in their redevelopment discussions, that that's closer to residential, so there could be a--
A link, a little closer link.
Yeah.
I think the commission discussion also addressed one single property, you know, as opposed to just designating one single property for the mixed use. They were looking at more of a no to district.
Yeah, I mean-- Sorry, say that again, what?
That they were looking at a group of properties for that designation. They were reluctant to just designate the Millen property without designating some additional properties in that area for mixed use.
So did they ultimately recommend everything south of Millport? Was that there?
That quadrant, yeah, that entire quad, well, they called it a quadrant, but it was south of Millport and--
East of 17th.
McBroad.
So it's not just that one piece of property where the Millen store is that we're looking at--
Correct.
For housing consideration?
It was the, south of Millport, and I think it was east of McBroad. I'm not 100% certain. Is that right?
I missed the question.
It's what, the Planning Commission recommendation for the, what they call the quadrant, was south of Millport, was it east of McBroad, I thought? Or was it everything south?
Everything to 17th.
I think south of Millport, west of McLaughlin, and up to 17th.
Okay, so more than I was just describing.
And council, can I ask a follow-up question? Staff will have asked. So just for clarification on that, with this new zoning, it wouldn't require for alternative uses to be built in that area. So you could still end up with something at the Millen store site, but then have it surrounded by additional industrial. They wouldn't be required to have a compatible use on the 17th side?
It's, there are a full range of uses that are listed. Industrial, warehouse, housing, limited retail.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
I had one other clarification, if it's okay. Mr. Stark, in his testimony, mentioned, and it's in his letter, at least the one from the Planning Commission--
Who's your packet?
--that got passed on in the packet. He referred to some support from advisory group members, and I know, so there's, in this list, he lists Kenneth Simpson and Rick Anderson, both related to the Anderson-Dye property. Only one of them was on the advisory groups. I just want to make that clarification, that there were not two spots. And we haven't seen the letters of support, or we have, staff hasn't received anything. He mentioned it again in his testimony. So we didn't get anything from them saying what their support was related to the Dietrich site.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other questions? I don't think so. Okay. Thank you. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. I still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public testimony. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Unanimous? The public testimony portion of the public hearing on the resolution directing staff to prepare plan and code amendments to implement the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Framework Plan and Implementation Strategy is hereby closed. Amy, could you put up your list of questions from the end of your presentation? We need split screen capability here, so we could have the maps and the questions. It would be good. Here. There we go. All right. So I'm all for doing easy questions first. Which ones are easy? Well, okay, we'll go, we'll start at the top and work our way down. But we may--
We may skip.
Yeah, we may be skip. Marijuana production growth as a conditional use in the NMIA zone, and the proposal is to still retain the buffer requirement. What do people think about that? And right now, it's-- 1,500 foot. Right, the buffer's at 1,500, but right now, it's a-- It's an outright permitted use. In the M. In the M. Which is now turning into the NMIA. Well, half and half. The NMIA is half M and half MTSA area four. Sub-area four. And so now they're talking about conditional use in the entire new NMIA. Yes. Gotcha. Yes. And I'm fine with that. And it doesn't affect Johnson Creek Boulevard? Because it still stays M. Okay. Any, I'm fine with that. Fine with conditional use. Yeah.
Me as well.
I'm better, yeah. Okay. One down. Oh, man. Flexibility with building heights above 65 feet. Actually, this may be something we want, we need to hear more from staff on, because I guess the applicant's architect said that they could do store plus four floors of housing at 60 feet. But I'd heard in dialogue with the Planning Commission, Denny got asked about, is 65 feet allow for five, four or five floors? And there was some, depends on what it is, I guess. Depends on the nature of the, yeah. And if it were light industrial or makerspace, would that require a higher, you know, probably more floor space, more, so we're talking, if we want to encourage makerspace and we want to encourage light industrial, and again, I'm thinking of the New York building, which I toured, and very high ceilings, so-- All the way up? Yeah. Even the upper floors have high ceilings?
Yeah. Which is why we saw something about 90 feet in the--
Yeah, right. Right. Well, and I guess this question really kind of ties to the next question. Yeah, the fall. And that, I remember the Planning Commission, specifically Scott Jones, who's an architect, suggesting that, that, you know, maybe we want to allow height if we want to incentivize certain things like green building, or, you know, some of the things that we incentivized in moving forward Milwaukee, or certain uses or something. Obviously, we haven't talked about that and what we might want to incentivize, but I don't know. How do people feel about the 65-foot height and whether we should consider allowing more height?
I think if it makes it more feasible, potentially more feasible for the sorts of, you know, additional expanded commercial and office space--
you know, additional expanded commercial and office space that we were considering, you know, that we talked about it our last time, that we talked about this project, then I think that that makes some sense to me.
Yeah. I wouldn't be wildly opposed to it. I'm kind of neutral at the moment, but I can see where 90 feet would be acceptable for that area and, and given the uses that we expect out of it.
So I think about, I don't know if Denny will know the answer, anybody will know the answer to this, but I think about, and it's not my original thought, but actually the planning commission chair for me, a guy named Jeff Klein, used to talk about this, that our industrial area could be the new cruise way and could have, you know, office, you know, become an office center. And I guess I'm trying to think about how tall the buildings are in cruise way.
I'm on the sixth floor.
Pardon? Oh, yeah, your office is in one of them.
The one I visit all the time has six floors. I won't say which one that is, but I have other meetings over there.
Six, seven floors? And so they probably are going to 90 feet or going above 65 feet anyway?
It'd have to be more than 90. And the building is, you have to go up steps, so it's, I don't know if there's a subfloor or, I mean, you know, another floor down, but, yeah, because the Clarkland County Business Alliance meetings are over there, so I'm there frequently.
Those meetings are on the sixth floor.
Yeah, yeah.
Do people think that we want to allow that outright, or that we need to have a more detailed discussion about the FAR and the height bonuses and the green building and incentives?
Well, we have that in the fall. Isn't that the idea that, that this is
When they come back to us.
The direction will be to come back with those.
With the zoning code?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they come back with alternatives on that?
Well, so the guidance would be we're open to a higher level, but we want to think about using it as an incentive for certain desirable uses or building methods?
That's how I understood the presentation, the question.
Okay.
Yeah, so that takes
We have consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that enough for staff?
Sure.
Okay. Yay. Okay, now we're skipping. Permit waste management as a permitted use in the NMIA zone. I'm for doing something that gives Mr. Hyberg more comfort about the future of his business, but without opening up for Waste Management Inc. to come in and buy half of our industrial area and set up a similar business.
Or any other company like that.
Yeah, yeah. Other people?
Me too. I don't think that any one of us wants to put anybody out of business or limit their existing business to continue operations, but I did, I was a little concerned because this sort of seemed, just this question seemed to come, it took me by surprise a little bit, and I think that part of the reason was because this hasn't been something that's been discussed during this process. There was no discussion through the NMIA process about this question. And since there wasn't any public outreach at all about, you know, through this whole year-long process, about whether that might, whether some, whether, you know, that waste management would be expanded in this zone, I think that it's, I think that your suggestion is more appropriate than simply saying
Than just saying permitted use outright?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right. Is everybody in agreement with that?
I agree.
I think we need to do what we can to protect the businesses that already exist. Like they said, that was the number one, you know, concept of the NMIA plan.
So planners, is that enough guidance?
Who is that? Where it doesn't open doors, that's good. Yeah.
All right, and modify figures four and seven to be less specific on the location.
Is that the bridge and the path?
That's the bridges, access of 24th class of East Worth.
Yes.
That seems like an easy one to me, because, I mean, we just, the request is just to not be specific in prescribing exactly what the connection would be? Am I misunderstanding, I mean, right?
And I think inherent in that would be, I mean, let's face it, housing's one of our number one issues, you know, it's being resolved because there's like 500 or 600 units that are probably coming on board in the next year or so. But these people have lived in their homes for years and years and years. And, you know, I would hate to think that all of a sudden we would do something that might jeopardize their ability and opportunity to retain that as long as there was some other, some other answer to the need that's there. So I would appreciate that staff would be able to look at other solutions for that issue, if that makes sense. It's, you know, it's, staff understands the need to do that, and those folks would, I think, be pretty happy if we looked somewhere else for, how can we, how can we have that connectivity without?
I'm fine with modifying those figures to be less specific, but still supporting connectivity. And also, the city has its, it's a way, and so I don't want to, and we're not doing that here now anyway, but I wouldn't want to foreclose that opportunity after some study.
And it does seem like nobody's thinking this is in the near term. It's not until properties redevelop. Nobody's saying we're going to go out there and build a bridge, and if you build it, they will come. It's a, as the, as the load on the streets and the, and the traffic and everything else warrant more, I guess the bike pad we might want to do sooner than redevelopment, but certainly a road road, I would think we would not be doing in the absence of, you know, some more intense development there. So I think we don't want to, I agree, we don't want to foreclose the city's options, but we don't need to create attention until we know, you know, what's the right answer for whatever the future development may be.
Yeah.
Where it may be. There's lots of parcels back there, so.
I agree.
So everybody's in agreement on that? Okay.
Yes.
We're plowing ahead. So, okay, oh, I should, okay, permit the same amount of retail throughout the modified MTSA zone as MTSA sub-area three. And so that's the, allow a conditional use for 30,000 square feet and do it in the whole MTSA area. Sub-area three was the area nearest the station, is that right? Yeah.
South of.
Oh, it was the ODOT site. Okay, okay. God, I can't even remember why we agreed for that to be different back when I was on the planning commission on the MTSA zone. I don't know.
As currently provided?
I mean, we had a lot of testimony back then on the, you know, what's a 20,000 foot and what's a 30,000 foot, and had pictures of, you know, New Seasons and Walgreens and, you know, we had a lot of
How many square feet they took up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
And I, I remember having some trepidation about the 30,000 square feet, but I mean, it is as a conditional use, so.
I definitely have concerns about 30,000.
Do you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we just
I definitely have concerns about 30,000.
So you'd like to keep
Especially in the
A bit to 20?
Yeah, I would. I think perhaps, and I think, you know, in that sub-area three, maybe some of the thinking was that it would be, it would be less likely to develop into some sort of a 30,000. But I think areas south of there potentially would run at a greater risk of big box. If we're talking about doing
South or north?
Oh, it's, maybe.
I think that's, that's almost the southernmost part of our new
Can you put the map back up?
I think the map would be very helpful. Thank you.
I told, yeah.
Yeah, the one that has, the one that has the sub, oh, there we go. Perfect. So the green
So over on this side, the proposed green.
Okay, so that was the bulk of the area. It's not really expanding it that much in terms of the where. I mean, it seems, with the access issues, it seems unlikely to me that we'd be doing it up there on Clasip in that area, but I don't know.
Okay, so, so what is it again to
So you can do
Continue to allow the same amount of retail throughout the modified MTSA up there as currently provided in sub-area three, which is the green over there? So in other words, just taking in those top two parts?
So let me make sure I remember correctly what the
And is it 30,000 below that in the, what will be just the NMIA zone?
No.
It's It's only 5,000.
It's only 5,000.
5,000.
5,000.
I also want to just point out that the planning commission did not receive any testimony asking for this change. This was a sense of the planning commission that they wanted to have this discussion. So just passing that along, since you mentioned that there was substantial comment in previous iterations.
No. So nobody's asking for this. It was just the planning commission raised it.
It was the planning commission's recommendation.
Although I guess if we're merging all of MTSA into one thing, it has to have, it has to go one way or the other, right?
Right. And that's probably what prompted them to have any discussion about it.
Right. So if I under, remember correctly, you can have 5,000, any individual retail use can be 5,000 square feet, you can have up to 20,000 in a building, in a warehouse or a big building, but there are four or 5,000 square foot ones. It's not one 20,000 square foot one.
In MTSA, it could be.
It could be one big 20,000 square foot one. Okay. Okay. But in the NMIA, no. Okay, got it, got it. Okay. Well, I'm actually, I'm with Counselor Falconer. I like keeping it to 20. I liked it, keeping it to 20 back then, too.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, it's competition with downtown, it's competition with our central Milwaukee, we're trying to do, I think, you know.
And no one's clamoring for it either necessarily, or at least that's what it sounds like. So I would support staff's recommendation and not the planning commission's, which I think are different.
Yeah.
Right, so, but let's be sure we understand what staff's recommendation is.
So staff's recommendation is for the 20,000.
Okay.
And not the 30,000.
Okay, perfect. Are we all, we're all on board with that?
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Look at us go.
Yeah.
All right, now we hit the hard one.
Need that question?
Oh, no, I think we know that question.
Stick with the map.
Yeah, we can, you can leave the map, because that's the only question left, right? Yeah. All right, so the question of residential.
Yeah, the question of residential, but now I'm, I'm feeling really confused, because now I understand it to be that whole little area where all the discussion has been on one particular site. And so I am, I am concerned about that.
Well, that's what, that's what was very confusing to me about this planning commission's discussion deliberation, because it was pretty clear that the testimony was all about the Mill End site.
Yeah.
And Chair Heimer kept talking about how great, how appropriate it was to do residential next to 17th Avenue Trail, and I'm like, well, the Mill End site isn't next to 17th Avenue Trail.
But that is.
But the rest of that is. Yeah, so I mean, I felt like the planning commission frankly, I thought that was confusing in their discussion. And I would say, even though they voted for moving this forward, I thought Commissioner Jones gave a pretty compelling testimony, a compelling statements about his experience in central east side of Portland and how the introduction of residential has driven out industrial uses.
Well, I do want to point out to you that 75% of the city of Milwaukee is residential.
Yeah.
And we know of two or three residential, single-family housing units that are expected to come online, and also we know of at least one apartment complex that's coming online that has over 100 units in it. We have an expectation that there would be additional housing units in the
Several places.
Kilho Point.
Right.
And I talked to someone just a day or two ago that shared with me, there's interest in some other areas where 400 or 500 units of apartment housing could be built. But we have 75% of the, of the city of Milwaukee is residential already, and we have very little industrial area.
And I would, getting back to, you know, something that you said and was, and was repeated in the testimony, the number one goal of this project wasn't to necessarily protect, protect a specific business owner, it was actually to protect jobs.
Jobs.
And I don't know
And to increase job density.
Right. And that was part of the whole, you know, the reason why we, we made the, you know, the, around the discussion we had at our May study session was about expanding commercial and office uses. And I think that that ties really well into our future conversations about height increases and whether, like I said, I think that that could potentially make that a little bit more feasible and pencil out for some of the business owners, especially in this particular instance, where they, where they, maybe they, they wouldn't be able to continue operations as they currently, under our current zoning and code. So I think, you know, doing everything we can to encourage and to support the businesses to continue, continue operating businesses, that, that was the direction, and that was the overwhelming feedback from the public. So I mean, I wrote down, you know, of course, you know, and I recognize that there were a handful of people who were on the committee, you know, in the two different, you know, the group, the different advisory groups who support this idea of an overlay, but the overwhelming feedback that we received from the public was, was not in support of residential down there. It makes a ton of sense to me to allow residential in the property directly adjacent to the Light Rail Station, which I would encourage the current owners of the Pendleton store directly adjacent to the Tacoma Station area. They can build housing there.
Yeah, yeah.
So we do have lots of places where we, where we should expect to see housing develop, but I'm not necessarily convinced that in direct contradiction with, with public support, we should, we should encourage it there.
Yeah, so I had three sort of observations. One is that area south of Millport, all the reasons that Planning Commission Chair Heimer gave for why that was good for housing, and you know, the 17th Avenue and the access to downtown is also why it could be a great little office park area at some point. People get easy access to downtown for lunch, for, you know, getting to and from work, et cetera. That was one thought. Second, we just heard testimony, they heard testimony and we heard it again today, that the Hyberg site makes noise in the middle of the night. You know, now nobody's around to hear it, but there's actually not that much distance from, between the Hyberg site and the Mill End site. So, you know, we already have conflicts with the noise, noises and odors along Johnson Creek Boulevard, from the neighbors who are bothered by odors along, we've recently had an incident with the neighbors in the Ardenwald neighborhood who are bothered by some noise from some installations in the, in the TSA area. You know, we already have those conflicts happening, and if we build housing, we're just creating more potential for those kind of conflicts. And then my final thought is, oh, A, I'm, well, I'm optimistic that maybe office will pencil out sooner than the, than Mr. Dietrich and his consultants think, but, you know, our task is about not one business, but Milwaukee businesses generally. And if we allow residential and retail there, it is in, it is, it is a detriment to our downtown, it is a potential detriment to our central Milwaukee that we've rezoned to try and allow more mixed use and, and housing in there. It just creates more land and competition for uses that we've, you know, determined as a community where they should go.
And they were targeted for specific reasons, you know, like transit and access to amenities.
Right, right.
And, and infrastructure. I mean, part of the testimony we heard tonight was about how some of these, and in the staff report, was that the existing infrastructure isn't there staff report was that the existing infrastructure isn't there to support this, and so it would, and so adding housing in that area would, would create a lot of stress in terms of how much, how much additional traffic can be.
Yeah, because that's a messy old intersection.
Well, especially coming in and, in and out of 9090, most people, you know, are probably not going to be traveling up 17th Avenue to, to go to and from this, this specific area, they're going to be coming on 99.
Counselor Abma?
I agree with what you, what you have said and also Counselor Falconer. And I'd asked the question earlier, how many members were there on the advisory group? Because I am always curious to know, I didn't sit through those meetings, and so I don't like to come up here and substitute my own judgment when I haven't had the expertise and the experience that they've had. And I'm hearing staff, I'm hearing our consultant, and I'm hearing that maybe only five or six of this large group supported that. So I would be inclined to not allow this overlay, again, for the reasons you've stated, but also based on our staff's recommendation, the consultant. And that, it looks to me like the majority of the advisory committee was not for this either.
Yeah.
If the whole area were residential, maybe, maybe, but I've only heard a lot of testimony regarding the Mill End property, and it, it makes no sense to me to have residential in that one corner if the others didn't follow suit. It just doesn't fit to me.
And I did sit on the Tacoma State, you know, I participated in the Tacoma Station area planning a few of those meetings. And residential even there was, you know, wasn't, it wasn't a slam dunk.
No, it was.
So people are concerned about losing this area as, as a, as an employment zone.
There are very few resident, or very few industrial areas, I mean, still in the, you know, still in the metro region. And Milwaukee has some of the highest and best manufacturing and, and industrial uses of any of the areas around here. So in many ways, it behooves us to do what we can to protect that. And Counselor Abma, I just want to mention, I don't know if you knew, that Mayor Gamba sat on the NMIA, both the technical and the steering, and I chaired the project advisory committee. So we did hear that.
You did hear what?
As a group, they were not supportive of housing in the area.
Good, that's good, have confirmed. All right, it sounds like we have consensus on that, then.
We do have a motion for you tonight that's in the packet that would allow staff to go back and start working on, based on your amendments that you guys just made, start working on the comp plan and on the zoning. So if you guys could do that based on the amendments you've just recommended, that would be great.
And the, the resolution, when I read it earlier, it was pretty generic.
Yeah.
What page, RS 112? Something like that?
113.
113, oh, look at me, I was close.
So 113.
All right. Hold on. Sorry. Darn. I really have to.
I'd offer you my computer, but it has no juice.
I still have juice, I just can't get to pages very quick.
I gotta start carrying my power cord around with me.
There's probably some better way.
I have a spare if you need it in the future.
There's probably some better way. Yeah, on 113, there we go, okay.
Well, can't you get to it by, oh, you're not in a, you're just in Word?
I'm in a.
PDF?
I'm in PDF.
Yeah, but not PDF, too, because then you could go to the right page.
Can you put in a page number and search like that?
Yeah, I love it, I taught her something.
Do that.
About technology.
I had to change the color, too, of the, of the markings, I know how to do that.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on the resolution, or everybody was fine with the resolution as written?
I want to make sure, are, do we need to change anything to this in order to, what do, what do we need to?
Is the resolution broad enough in other ways? Is it sort of ambiguous enough?
Were our amendments clear enough?
Yeah.
You were exceptionally clear.
Okay.
So thank you, and we'll go back and watch the, the meeting just to confirm that we have your amendments correct.
Okay.
The only thing you might add is, in the now therefore be it resolved statement, you could add something like, and the clarifications provided at the meeting, tonight's meeting, you know, whatever the date is.
At the hearing of July 18th.
Right.
Yeah, let's make it as specific as.
That might be good.
Yeah.
Direct staff to prepare the comprehensive plan and code, implement the concepts outlined at the North Industrial Framework Plan and Implementation Strategy as amended. As clarified at the council meeting of July 18th, 2017. All right, who's making that motion?
I think you just did.
Go make the motion.
You can, actually.
Can I?
I'm happy to try a few more.
Go for it.
I move to approve the resolution directing preparation of plan and code amendments to implement the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Framework Plan and Implementation Strategy, including those amendments as further clarified at the July 18th, 2017 council meeting. Is that sufficient?
Good job, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution directing preparation of plan and code amendments to the, to implement the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Framework Plan and Implementation Strategy as amended per council discussion at the July 18th, 2017 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None heard? Passed unanimously? No, nothing else to read? But we're not done.
No, no.
Not quite done, we're almost done, but, nobody gave me a script, so I don't have a script from Mitch. Oh, we have Mitch.
Mitch is, I let him.
Long gone.
Because it was end of the session and there really wasn't much to report back on.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for all your work, Amy. And team.
Thank you.
I do have a single item that I'd like to just put out there as, if we're at that point of the meeting.
Okay.
And it was a request by Counselor Parks that I actually mentioned that there's an Oregon Live story, right now that talks about the fact that we are the 13th lowest crime community in the state, which actually is a really big deal. And when you look at who we're up there with, it says a lot about our police department and about our team, so thank you to all of you, and also thank you to our chief and his team, and thank you to Counselor Parks for asking me to say it.
Great.
Very good, I think everybody should know that, it's cool.
Is there anything, anybody else on the, on the legislative regional county issues? Anything else, any West issues, any C4 issues, any?
For West, there will be a meeting, I think it's August 1st.
August 1st.
To discuss the advisory group or committee that's being created since the districts have been merged, and so I will be there to attend and whoever else can make it. We've, we had, had a meeting on June 27th with a lot of stakeholders, and we gave a lot of input. There was county staff there, county attorney, there were members of the electeds from the various cities involved, other stakeholders from different groups that have been involved. And at that meeting, which lasted maybe two hours, we gave input on what we would like to see in an advisory group. We, there are, some are disappointed, they think it's not going to go far enough for the elected, or for the cities to have representation, but we'll see, we don't know. We haven't seen any materials yet on what the county had, it will propose. We just know the meeting is August 1st and they will send the materials next week.
And I just mentioned that the Board of County Commissioners will be meeting on Thursday evening as the District Advisory Board for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and as the current representative of the city and the chair of the actual DAB, I'll be attending that meeting and just in a more or less listening mode, but letting them know that I'm there to support them as they move NCPRD forward.
And Counselor Parks, we did receive a clarification because we've been referring to it in the same way. Scott Archer wanted us to know that it's a full voting meeting instead of an advisory board meeting, which is what the DAB has been in the past.
Right, that's correct, yeah. Because they do sit as the actual board, that's correct, thank you.
And they'll be meeting at the Sheriff's Training Center if anybody's interested in participating.
On 82nd?
Yes, yeah.
And what day was that?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock on Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday? Okay.
And Counselor Parks will be joined by Mitch Neiman for that discussion.
Anybody else have reports? Well, on the, on the sort of council, you know, announcement kind of thing that Mark usually does at the end, I would just say we had a really fun duck race over the dam.
Yeah, even though I didn't win.
I didn't know any of the three people who won, but I, I am actually told one of them works for Audubon, so I thought that was kind of a nice thing, that an Audubon person won.
Yeah.
The, it was, it was a good event, it got a lot of attention. I don't know how many more signatures they got on their, their petition, but it was a good event. On Saturday, July 28th, so not this Saturday, but the next, I hope I've got my dates right, is the hazardous waste disposal event at the Milwaukee Christian Church on King Road. This is your opportunity to get rid of those batteries, those compact fluorescent bulbs, those lawn chemicals. Old thermostats. Television. I think propane tanks.
Are they taking paint?
Paint, yes.
Paint, oil.
Paints, kitchen, you know, household chemicals, yard chemicals, garage mechanic chemicals, oil, all those things. It's usually something that you need to take to Oregon City, and we don't get local pickup opportunities very often, so please take advantage if you have things to dispose of.
Yeah, Council President Beatty, do you recall when, I know because you remembered these things so well, the, the next bulky waste pickup is? Nope.
It's in August.
August.
It's in August.
Is it 27?
I have it on my calendar because I have to prepare, hold on.
Or 19?
It's like 20th or, yeah, something like, 19th, maybe?
I think it's 19th, maybe, but I don't know.
Well, while, while the city manager's looking for that, I will also say that.
It's the 19th.
It's the 19th, August 19th is our bulky waste, which people will remember from last year. We're getting it done before the rain starts this year, which is good. Also, Sunday Parkway comes back in September, but it's actually, this weekend, it's Sunday Parkway is in northeast Portland, and it's supposed to be a nice weekend, so if people want to get out and walk or bike, that's going on this, this Sunday. Farmer's Market, of course, chugging along.
Good things about the food, the food carts, I've been hearing good things about that, and we've.
Carts, first Friday in August.
Tried a couple of those, been great.
Yeah, the food carts will be dedicated, yeah, first Friday in August. And actually, the farmer's market was voted number three on the Willamette Week Best in Portland list, which is interesting since it's not in Portland. No, it was three.
Yeah.
Yeah, the PSU market was first, the Hollywood market was second, and we were three. We were number three, but hey, that's pretty good since we're not even in Portland.
Not too shabby.
And, yeah, yeah, all right, well, unless anybody has.
I would make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys.